Oh, we'll start 30 seconds early. We will open our morning workshop of the Cucketa County Board of Commissioners. All three commissioners are present. We will start with Intern Director Jeff Hunter and Acton County Engineer Seth Scorola for Department update.
Okay, there's only one thing on your consent agenda, and that is the final acceptance and release of retainage for the small works contract, the 2022 contract for guard rail repairs. Why is it 2022? Because the state agencies take that long to approve the releases. And I'll turn it over to Seth for the construction and the design update.
Not much has changed on the construction end of things. The crews are still out doing their visual pavement readings. And the contracts and bonds for the annual striping contractor at the contractor waiting for execution. On the design end, all of our federal projects are still at washout, waiting approval to go to add. The liquid asphalt purchase and bid is out and will be opened on March 7. I handed you the annual bridge report for 2022. No big changes in any of the sufficiency ratings of our bridge system. That's a good thing. Couple of things to note, we had them, our contractor do an under bridge inspection of the Byerland Bridge. That's the first bridge on Hockter Road as you leave town. We noticed some cracks in one of the girders and wanted them to look into it a little further. Turns out, looks like the cracks have been there a while, probably result of rapid shrinkage during construction, so they're not concerned with that. But that, we do have a rotated abutment on that bridge that we need to look into repairing. Right now, we can't have any overweight loads permitted over it. Garver Castle Bridge, that's the bridge just south of Glenwood on BZ Glenwood Highway. It's got a cracked sill cap and we'll need to repair that in the near future. Right now, it's got a rating of structurally deficient because of that. And we'll be looking for some grant money to repair the BZ Glenwood Bridge as well. There's a shoring repair that was done many years ago and that is starting to deteriorate. So we'll need to be addressed in the near future as well. That's about it.
The real synopsis to the Byerland Bridge is, one, it's not eligible for federal granting. But the reason that's so critical is we have all those, that alternate energy up on Hockter Road that can't get there by taking the bridge, so they go around Finn Ridge. And so it's a long tour for them. Plus, it's not very good to drive the, you know, long crane through there. But we'd like Seth that we cannot allow them on that bridge. So you know, if the state wants to give out money for green, we'll be more than happy to do work on the Byerland Bridge.
So you want to talk a little bit about the Roosevelt, I mean, Overpass? It's the only one, I guess. Now, there's Northwestern Lake Bridge too. With those ratings so low and what our plans are there?
Those are both really old bridges. Yeah, they're starting to show their wear, which is reduced efficiency rating, which has been going down slowly. There's no big jump in them, but they'll need to be looked at in the future for replacement. The Northwestern Lake Bridge, it's got a good substructure now because they came and replaced it, but we do need to look at the, the main system of the bridge to be replaced and probably look at widening at that point as well. So a lot of those scores have to do with width. So like Northwestern Lake Bridge is narrower than what the standard calls for, so that reduces its efficiency rating. And that's the same with the Overpass there in Roosevelt. So it's not that they're failing, it's just they don't meet current standard. And their age has to do with it as well.
Yes.
Is the sufficiency rating between like states usually the same like?
Yes, it's federal.
It's federal.
Okay, so when we have a six on the Head River Bridge, oh, we're doing really well compared to that.
Yes. Yep.
Okay, we'll jump over to the maintenance projects and the crews are brushing, grading and spot graveling on the east side. On the west side, we're brushing, ditching pothole and preparing for the waterline project. Upcoming facilities projects, the general was in, did all the punch list items on this building. There's two more sub items, not including the HVAC system. There's a blind that needs to be put in and some glass work, Mission Glass has to come in and do. We still need an estimate for that. We're getting closer to that. So we should have something to you guys before too long. Courthouse HVAC will be installed in the spring and the small works contract is out on ad for that and the Pioneer Center. Jail roof replacement, we're working on the design with the project scheduled to be done in the fall, like we talked about last week, I believe. Superior Court, we're finalizing the design to send to DHAP for their review. Waterline construction starts Monday. Part of that, and I'm going to kind of skip down to what we have on the follow-up issues that fits in where they do. Part of that is, is we're looking at, because of that, we're going to switch the crews to four tens. So, because the west side crew is actually doing that work. East side crew has a bunch of other work to do this year, so I like to kind of spread it out. And we get more bang for the buck if they work four tens. And the side crew wants to start on some of their work too, so it makes sense now to go to four tens. Normally, we hold off another week or two, but we're a look at doing it, starting February 27th is when we're going to start and that's when we go to four tens. Courthouse remodel, floor covering was installed last week. We're scheduled to get the countertops here in a week or two and then I will give you a tour of the new completed break room and meeting room in the courthouse. Radio tower site, tower installation is scheduled for April, May, weather depending. And the equipment installation contract, small works contract should be on ad here in another week or so. Follow-up issues. We're giving another tour, very small, but to the Dallasport people again. They have some more questions this Thursday. It actually isn't a tour. David had somebody else he wanted to take through. He wanted to actually just go when he wanted to go. I said, you know, you can't just go when you want to go. It doesn't work that way. So somebody from PUD is going to meet him. They're going to answer any additional questions they have. They have some questions, so we're moving that forward. I handed you out a map. Or aerial, this is of Clickatat. And a couple, 19, we applied for a grant there with transportation alternates. And they, we didn't, I don't know if we were, I don't know if we actually submitted the grant. I think we pulled the grant because of what little money they had to offer. This year, they have $663,000 for Skamania and Clickatat County to share. The total amount they have is 3 million. A little over 3 million, but most of that goes to Clark County. They divvy it up based on population. So my question is, is do you want us to go ahead and apply for this money? We would apply for approximately 400 to 450,000 dollars for this project. Keeping in mind, I know Sharon wants to get, is talking about some of this for, I think, some bus stops or something. We'd be competing against them and like I said, there's only a total of 663,000 between us and Skamania County. However, because of fee sharing, there is no match required for this. So there'd be no money unless you want us to put in a match. It gives you better, I don't know, it actually gives you a better chance anymore. It doesn't. Because they have toll credits, so it just doesn't. You apply for the whole amount of the project. So the match doesn't really matter much in scoring like it used to.
What's currently there that's not a sidewalk? It looks like there's a concrete trail there.
There is a, it's, it's a path, kind of. The reason we would make it concrete is it's part of a long-term thing. To keep applying for this grant, you need to provide connectivity. The idea is, is we would keep taking it down the road. And actually, the other way too, we'd swing it across and go, so it connect, eventually we would go to First Street and then down First Street. We either would do the, we looked at three places to provide this connectivity for this grant. One was at the fairgrounds, but we got to get, we have to get Golden Dale involved because to provide connectivity for us to the fairgrounds, we need that, we need Golden Dale to build that section on buyers. Out, or not buyers, but what is that street?
Mill Street.
Mill Street. Because there's no connectivity. And so they don't want to put a piece of sidewalk in the middle of nowhere. So we looked at that as potential. Another potential would be to build more sidewalk in Lyle.
I know Golden Dale was talking about building sidewalk up to the fairgrounds. It's in their park planning that they're currently going through. I don't know that they have money or applied for a grant or whatever, but it's it's one of their top priorities of their park.
I've heard that and I've, I talked to Larry about that. And we actually asked him if they wanted to join in with us on this prior and they weren't really.
They weren't interested.
They weren't interested. I mean, we could do that again, but the problem is, is there's not going to be enough money to pay for both. By no means, those are a lot more expensive. Reason we picked this is because it starts the connectivity. We've already built the one piece on the trail and then this would start our connectivity into Clickatat, which eventually gets us to First, Second, Third Street, which those really do need sidewalk repairs. Because the sidewalks are just completely dilapidated. If you've been there, they're just shot. Again.
That's the part of government I don't understand because it's like, I could see using the money to repair those. But it's like, this is like building a sidewalk in the middle of nowhere that I, how many people have complained for a sidewalk here?
Probably not a lot. A lot of people.
Spend half a million dollars of taxpayer money on a sidewalk that nobody's asked for. That's the problem I have with.
No, no, I'm, I don't disagree with you at all. The problem is, is the, you have to have that connectivity. See, if we did it on third, they would, or on first, they go, where's it going to? Because there's no, it doesn't meet anything. It just goes on first.
So where it's meeting out in front of the office facility, is that considered connectivity because of the crosswalk?
Because of the crosswalk and we made that link. So that's why this was always the second phase. We had laid them out in phases. This would be the second phase. Then the third phase was actually going the other way and going back to heading towards First Street. You also have that, that launch that's kind of out there. We were looking at, you know, getting money for that. Just long-term stuff we were throwing around. I'm not saying we have to do it. It's just stuff that we were thinking about doing.
Wasn't there a connection made from the trail down to the gas station?
No, there's one made to the, there's one made to the school.
Community, community center there.
Community center to the school is the connection we made. The problem with doing, and we, I would rather do first, honestly. It'd be just simpler. But they'll say, then there, what they're going to want us to do is partner with the state. And we'd be pretty adamant not to do that. So we get stuck in the whole 142 fiasco that the state should do, but won't do. Wants the county to pick up the ball.
So how does this, how will this in the future create connection with first?
Well, because then you would come and go from there. You'd build it on the other side and then you would head to first and then that would get you.
Two or three more projects down the road.
Probably.
Come down River Road?
Yeah, you would go down River Road, go to first and then from the next project would be first. So you would be, you'd have this one, one, another one and then first, yes. The only other way to get there would be to go 142. Which would be the quicker way, but then you're, you know, essentially you're spending county tax dollars and state right-of-way.
But nobody's ever going to walk around River Road to get up there that I can see?
Probably not.
People take the path of quickest and fastest distance and everybody's going to walk around 142 and then straight across. Right? I mean.
No, no, I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you at all. It just would be our way to do it. Because if not, I mean, unless we get the state to do 142. You know, Public Works has tried a lot for quite a bit to get the state to do it. Said, you guys have, you guys should have to do this. You're going to upgrade the asphalt there, but they found all different ways to not do it. This is DOT. DOT has actually reached out to us and said, well, didn't you guys write a connectivity grant? Why don't you write a grant and just put it on 142? I go, I built stuff on 142. I know how this will play out. We won't have enough money to do it.
I, I guess I just have trouble because I look at all the parades and whatnot that are going to the fairgrounds and you get that narrow road into the canyon there.
No, no.
There's no sidewalks and they're falling off the side of the road. This already has a trip, I, I would be happy with this there without sidewalks and it's like, to me, there's, there's better places to put.
I don't disagree. I threw this one out because it matches the money. Now, we could look at the fairgrounds and we could propose that again. I don't know how successful we'll be because we don't have the connection. Now, if we get the city to do it.
How far out of that, down through that canyon is county property? Where does the city end?
Right about the bottom of that dip. Right before you get to that, what is that next street down there? There's a sign right there where we have our, our little keep Clickatat County green. That's our, that's where our road starts.
That would leave only one more piece of connectivity between what we would do and where the city section is currently. Then you just need to do, the city would need to do one more step to connect the two.
To 142. Yeah, they, they have a pretty decent sized piece there. But I mean, I'm not saying you couldn't do it.
What's our right-of-way through there? Because it doesn't look like we have a wide right-of-way on fairgrounds.
At the fairgrounds?
From, coming down that hill from the fairgrounds, I'm looking at the county map and it's not showing, it just looks like an easement rather than a right-of-way.
I think it is. I think we have 60 there though. We'd have to research that. We can, we can check on that. I mean, we don't, that's why we wanted to bring in here with plenty of time for discussion because we don't have to have the grant in right-of-way. We still got some time.
So, so if we proposed replacing all of the bad sidewalk, they'll say no because there's no connection? And you can't say, well, we're waiting on DOT to do their part. We're providing our part of the connection and we're replacing a current liability because that busted up sidewalk if somebody trips and falls?
Well, they won't say no. They, they would never say no because of that. What they would do is they would, when they go to scoring, one of the major elements of the grant is connectivity. And they would say, well, you didn't get it, so you know, you weren't successful with the grant.
But so there's money that's set aside for Clickatat and Skamania County?
Yes.
Do we know what Skamania County is proposing?
Don't know, don't have, Lori might know.
How can they say no then if it's the only thing that's being proposed?
Right, if it's the only thing, well, they could, not necessarily, they could give it to Clark County. That happened to us a couple of years ago when we proposed the fairgrounds project. We proposed the fairgrounds, there was no connectivity. They gave the money to.
So, so we are, so there's monies that should be coming to Clickatat County but, and Skamania County, but it's not guaranteed. So Clark can take everything.
Because they call it rural. We're only eligible for the rural part of the grant. But that doesn't, so we're eligible for up to $663,000, but that doesn't guarantee it to us. If the, if Clark County has a better project, they'll give it to Clark County. And that's what happened the last time we tried to get the project over at the fairgrounds. We didn't score high enough, they say, because we had no connectivity, because that was our thing, you know? Look, we have all those people. It only makes sense. And then you got the link in between. You got to start somewhere. Didn't have, you know, so we called Dale and said, what the heck? You know, I called Dale and said, what's going on Dale? I've always been successful doing this. Well, you didn't have the connectivity, so we ended up giving it to LaGrande or whatever in Clark County.
So there, technically for the fairgrounds, you have the county section and the city section and they want connectivity to start with the city section.
Well, that's what they would, that's what they would prefer, yeah. And we could try it again, but Lori sits on the boards.
Yeah, yeah. And that, that's hard. They did say that money can just all go to Clark County. It could happen. So you have to make sure your project's solid. The Clickatat project, that's kind of a natural area back through there. And what if instead of a match, we figure out a naturalized trail from there back to the back section and call that our match, that we're going to naturalize a nice trail back through there. And then our connection is from our match, naturalized trail up First Street and maybe Second Street for the money that way.
That's a good thought. We looked, it has to meet ADA though, so it has to be a hard surface.
Okay.
As long as we could look at something like that, we would have to fund that and then apply for this and another avenue for first. And that would be, because honestly, this is, we can get this done cheaper than we can, than we would have. Because the grant is federally funded, federal funds, which means our people cannot work on it. It has to be a contract. So for the 450, we could get this done considerably cheaper if we just did it with our people. And like you said, we could do something natural and do that.
And call it our match.
Call it our match or, or do it. I mean, we could propose it like that, then look at doing first. Or we could do this and, because this comes out every other year, build this and then go back and ask for something for Clickatat the following year. That'd be another option. And then we could look at something either in Lyle or, no, we, I'd really like to do the piece in front of the fairgrounds, honestly. We've done the, you know, we did our, the stuff right in front. Problem is, is I don't think we'll win. I really don't. I mean, we could try it, but I don't think they'll give it to us. I think we'll end up with nothing.
And there's no way to get the city to partner with?
Unless we can get the city to partner. Okay, we have time.
That makes sense to me and, you know, if, I gotta like show up at a city council meeting, which are who the actual people are you need to partner with, not the ones that you're going to call. Because they're the ones that tell the one you're going to call what they're going to do.
And keep in mind, Sharon has a project for bus stops and they're not a bad idea.
Right. No, I'm not disagreeing. Again, we don't have to do this. I just throwing it out there for.
I, I just know how big of a push it was with the people on the park committee. That seemed to be the first thing they thought they can do. I mean, they have this giant loop that they have planned and that's step one. It's not, you know, new playgrounds, that's step one. So I hate to bypass that opportunity. And they still had to hear from constituents who were falling off the road trying to get up to the fairgrounds.
And it's a dangerous little section.
No, we've always thought it was a good project. Like I said, I applied for it a couple of years ago and we just were unsuccessful and they ended up giving it to LaGrande. That's why we never did anything until the city, you know, would come forward and say, you know, we want to be part of this. And, but if you could make that happen, then yeah, that would be the ideal place to start doing this at.
Do they get to apply for grants for something like this as well?
Yeah, they're part of, they, I don't think they, they don't really show up though. They're, they're part of this because it's, but Clickat, but Golden Dale never really attends the RTC stuff. They just haven't.
Would it behoove us to apply for the grant on their behalf for their section and then we can apply for our section next time?
Well, you could. I mean, I, again, I, and I gotta go to, to the board here and, you know, because ultimately then the county's building stuff in the city.
I'm just thinking if there's only one pot of money and they got to have their section before we can do our section. And we all kind of realize that's a priority.
We'll bring you an estimate. It'll be, it'll be much more expensive doing that piece than than doing this. This is, I mean, we can bring you the cost and if the city could come up.
You thought this was going to be $450,000 to build a six-foot sidewalk that distance?
It includes stormwater too.
It includes stormwater too.
I just feel like I'm building a sidewalk to nowhere on this one. I, I I just can't for the life of me imagine there's not a better place to use those funds than, than.
It isn't a lot of use.
No, no, I don't disagree with you. I, I don't disagree with you. I just, we were trying to package the grant money for what we had available that we could, that we would stand a chance of winning. I mean, ultimately, we could go to Lyle and, you know, because they have connectivity and repair a sidewalk in Lyle. That would be another option. But that gets expensive in Lyle. I mean, we did Sixth Street, what was it? A million, almost a million dollars.
There's a set of steps that comes down from across the gas station. And if we could look at that in the future of making that a connection, short project there, then, and a crosswalk painted, then you could get down First Street. That way.
True, true. There, there's a lot of options. There, there's some options. The problem with, the problem with Lyle's always been the 142 deal with the state because that's a mess. Nobody wants to touch that.
Nobody wants the liability of what, if you create a stop or a crosswalk in there, you're now on the hook for everybody gets hit at that crosswalk.
And State Parks is, I sat in on a meeting and they are going to have crosswalks coming out from, I think, Clickatat Street and one of the other streets up. And they're dropping the, the highways, dropping the speed through there by a lot.
Are they going to do any work on the sidewalks or are they going to do kind of the park thing and just, well, state will probably want them to do work on there. The biggest problem with Clickatat and the reason the state really doesn't want to touch the sidewalks there is because of the sanitary, you know, basically the sanitary sewer. Everybody still has a tank. They don't have the drain field, but they still have a tank. And a lot of those tanks sit right where those sidewalks would have to go. So, and the state doesn't really know what they have for right-of-way there or, because I've talked to them about that project a long time ago when I wrote the grant to do the stuff along the state highway in Lyle. I looked at Clickatat too and I talked to the state, I said, which one? They go, huh huh. Go to Lyle, don't go to the, you know.
Yeah, and I've heard too that that easement for 142 is really questionable. It's just the highway and that's it.
Yes, there's a lot of very questionable stuff. So that's, that's honestly the reason they don't even want to touch it. But they're going to hopefully be, one of these days, they're going to be stuck doing it.
Well, their current idea is to take, so we did the one portion of trail there in front of the school going to the community center. Their way out of repairing the sidewalks is they repair the pavement through that section is, well, we'll just build the rest of that trail that sits on the old rail bed and not touch the sidewalks on the other side because there's an ADA ramp route. You guys don't have to use the sidewalk. So they're trying to get out of it as well and not have to touch the sidewalks. And upgrade any of the ADA crossings there.
So we can look at the other stuff. We still have time. I just wanted to bring it up for discussion. Sorry it took so long.
Yeah, I would say find me something that, that makes more use of taxpayer dollars. More people are going to use it. It'll allow for more, yeah, and then.
While he's still here, did you want to ask him about this?
Oh, you don't, I don't know that you want me to, but we can. Go ahead.
I have a couple others real quick. There's a safety grant also. That one's actually due the 15th of March. What we do with that is, is, you know, the states, the federal government's mandated a lot of upgrades in signage and stuff like that. We apply for that. There's no match and that's how we get the signs upgraded by using federally funded federal funds. We'll also apply for Sundale, even though they don't like to pay for actual projects. They like signs and that kind of stuff. This year, we're actually going to apply to replace signs, not put in new. If that's okay. That's usually a couple million dollars. We also use, we also stripe roads with that. Yeah, and we're not, we're not looking to add more stuff because.
Then you got to upgrade and take care of more stuff.
Right. What we want to do is upgrade the current stuff we have. That's our goal. If we can, if we can get it by the fellas. Okay. The charging station grant that, and I have to do a little bit more research on that. I'm not really sure. I see the cities want it all joined together and then we have places in Lyle and, and it sounds like Northwest Energy is going to take care of it, but I don't know who's paying for it all. Energy's gonna take care of it, but I don't know who's paying for it all, long term, and what that would be. You know, because I know Benjen and White Salmon wants to put in charging stations, and they want us to do the stuff in Lisle. Would like it to look at Lisle. I just don't know who pays for it long term.
And that's, that's the kicker we need to look at with the grant. That's kind of what I told them. We don't just sign them because it sounds good. We have to look at the long-term costs associated with them and make sure it makes sense.
Because conference grants are, once you get the money, it's hard to get out of them.
Well, and then, you know, even if it puts the charging station in, you're paying for operation year over year over year. So that's the, the financial part we need to know the answer to before we want to apply for it, I think.
And that's all we have on our list, unless we got some.
We've got the oil.
Oh, yes. We also did the research for the oil changes and stuff. I think Seth handed it out. Now, we're being conservative with an hour. We're hoping we can get it down more. We just don't know how, you know, how quickly the, the other departments would, you know, bring their vehicles in and everything else. So we set aside an hour, so these are the costs. If we can get it done in 45 minutes, and we can lower those costs by, you know, a quarter for the labor, for the shop cost. But this is our shop cost, this is what we pay.
And that includes checking all the other fluids levels and everything else, not just changing the oil.
Right.
That would be an increasing cost if we had to replace any of the other transmission fluid or anything else. That's not included here.
But my, my only question was stop time at one hour, and I was curious where you got that one hour from? Whether that, you know, was a Chilton manual or?
Well, that's, that's, we will, that's what our, our people have said, but I think we might be able to be a little quicker than that. That's why I was saying it could, might be 45 minutes.
As a mechanic, you only get paid three tenths of an hour, so, and you make a pretty decent living, three tenths of an hour, so I don't know where an hour comes in. Should I do a brake job in an hour?
Well, that's what we typically charge RV, is usually an hour. Again, a lot has to do with if the guys are waiting for the vehicles, and we're holding the spot, and somebody is late, that all goes into the shop charges. If people, you know, deliver the, because you're holding the bay open for them. You know, if, if you're holding, that's why everybody's charging $130 to change their oil, because shop charges have gone up. Yeah, and like I'm saying, we might be able to get it lower than that. The only way we would know is if we actually tried it.
Well, you do do your own.
We do do our own, yes.
And you charge yourself an hour? But we're doing a lot more than just changing the oil too.
Well, yeah, we do a lot more on our own.
We're changing brake, you know, checking brakes and doing all that other stuff, so.
Yeah, we weren't offering that, so we could probably, we could probably get this down, unless you want us to, and I, I really don't want to get into the tire business, because we don't balance tires. We have to take them to less swap. And why would you pick?
I, I'm ideally looking at you guys for general maintenance of oil change, brake job, that's it. Nothing outside really of an oil change, brake lift job. Hey, my turn signal isn't working.
Let us go back to the, and we'll see if we can maybe get the hour down to 45 minutes.
I think we need to just, in all reality, sample a couple.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And, you know, see what the answer is, and then we might need to sample a couple more while I'm standing there with a stopwatch watching. To see how much of that hour is actually moving or how much of it's eating donuts.
We have a volunteer.
Okay. Okay.
Well, that's the other thing we have to work on is how we get it there and give you a ride back, so that you're not having to wait for the vehicle to be done, because that's my ideal hope, is they can just be dropped off. Keys can be dropped off, so that when you guys are ready, you just go hop in the car, bring it in.
That would be much better for us, yes.
So that way you're not holding a bay open.
Well, and that reduces your time.
We've got to figure out that ride back, but that's the same ride back as they would have to do if they're taking it to somewhere else anyway, so.
Yeah, I think we can be much quicker if we hadn't really talked about that, that piece of it. Again, if we have to hold the bay, we're, we're literally waiting for, say, we'll use Alicia since she's sitting here, Alicia to drop the car off, and now Alicia's 20 minutes late. And our guys are, you know, well, we know we gotta get this in, we gotta get it done.
I see for an hour, you might have to come pick up the car and bring it back when you're done.
Yeah, we want to try to avoid, actually, that would be a different, it's actually a different fee. It's actually cheaper, but I really don't want to get, I want to avoid that, because then you're not paying shop charge, you're just paying the labor. That mechanic's wages.
Help me help you.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. That's all I have. Do you guys have anything else?
Yeah.
Yep. All right, moving on. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, we are behind schedule by 15 minutes already, so we'll have to do a little catching up throughout the day. We'll move on to Public Health Director Erin Quinn.
Um, so I assume that you saw all the numbers in the packet. I think the only thing I needed to update you on on this one was for the OSS permits and site evaluations. I didn't have the breakout of east-west when I printed this out for your packet. So for January, there were three permits east and three permits west, and then for the site evals, there were four east and three west.
About as even as a split as you can get, I guess.
Yeah, so.
We're trying to figure out where the growth is happening.
Yeah, so comparatively, we're looking at, with the permits, they're a little bit less than 2021, but definitely seeing increase of over 2020 and 22. And then the site evaluations, a little bit lower than 2022 and 2021, but more than 20, so we're still kind of in a flux of where, kind of where we're going as far as growth-wise, I think. Um, our water lab, both labs are gonna do their proficiency testing in February, so they do that once a year to ensure that they can maintain their licensure. Each member of the each team is working with the state FPHS. We got money to support water system capacity. Data management, which is hardware software upgrades, integrated data systems throughout the state. Climate change, we got some funding for in safe and healthy communities, and we're still kind of working out how, how our roles are going to be locally with respect to what the state's asking us to do, so everybody just was assigned a group probably a couple of weeks ago, and then they're gonna just go forward with seeing what they, what the state wants. I'll be meeting with the public health directors tomorrow in Olympia to further talk about how, how they see these funds being integrated into our local community. Nikki's gonna take over the public health emergency preparedness duties as her role with Skamania Food winds down. We still are on track to be out of Skamania County as the food inspecting April 1st, so we're still tracking that. We may provide some technical assistance past that, but will not be performing the food inspections after that time.
Are they kicking and screaming to bed?
No. I mean, they might be, but not to me. They, they have the FPHS, maybe a comparable amount to what we get, so it's just a matter of them deciding how they want to build the program. From my perspective at least, if they want to either do something in-house or contract with another county to provide the services, so. And we'd talked about it before, so this wasn't completely out of the, out of the blue for them, so. We did give them 90 days' notice, and we won't leave them high and dry if, if we need to make further arrangements with them. Clinically, the sexual reproductive health program, we should be done with our, we, we had some audit findings, and we're on a corrective action plan. We should have everything turned into them by next week. We are completing a cost analysis for the program. It was based on 2020 data, which is what the state requested us to do our cost analysis on. The results are not good. The program is, is not fiscally solvent, so we're looking into A, how we could change the things that aren't solvent, and B, if we can do the data for 21 and 22 to determine if there's a little bit difference, because we've done a lot of restructuring and kind of see if there's, if the more current data helps the program look a little bit more solvent, so.
Why did they, why did they have you do it based on a COVID year?
I'm not entirely sure. I, I've asked that, and I didn't feel like I got an answer that I could.
We were hoping that's where most of the money was being distributed, so you might have been a better chance of being solvent on that year.
We still, we still got the, not the exact same, but comparable amounts of money for family planning. The amounts haven't changed, and honestly, we didn't see that many less clients that year.
That's it, it just doesn't make any sense.
It, we, I want us to get into compliance, so I stopped arguing with them as far as that, so. But we are continuing to look at it, because I'm not happy with kind of what the results look like. And, and how we can either fix that or, or look at alternative options, so. Uh, the clinical's also looking into reestablishing a nurse home visiting program. We've done that in the past. The state has offered to provide funding if we'll look, the, the funding that they would provide would be to plan what that would look like and not necessarily implement it, so we'd have a year to do the planning and then determine if it's something that was worthwhile implementing. It's been successful in the past, and I think that it was, I think staffing in the past was the reason that kind of that had gotten lost, and then pre-COVID, and then all of that sort of. We did get 100 more doses of Narcan available, so that's, we went through the first, I think we got 40 the first round. So I've gone through that and have 100 more doses available to give out, so.
Is there any kind of statistic on how many of those have actually been used?
Used, no. I can just tell you kind of handed out. And I think that's in the packet, and then I think, should we, we did 10? Yeah, we had 40 the first time, so we've given 40 out, and then, but now we've got an additional 100. I heard on a meeting, I did not fact check this, that they'd given out over 80 out of the vending machines so far that are in the county. So people are asking for it and, and checking it out, so it's encouraging. Uh, as far as administratively, our nurse position is still open. We're still advertising for that. We are still interviewing for the clerical position that's open in the Goldendale office. Health officer contract is on the consent agenda today, so that, once that's signed, we'll get them set up administratively. They do have some orientation to do with the state and then with us as well, so we'll kind of get them on-boarded over the next couple of weeks. I have a pass-through, I have two pass-through, well, one pass-through grant with two MOUs that are coming, probably in the next couple of weeks, you'll see as well. The pass-through grant is to provide behavioral health or mental health access to perinatal, so new moms and families. And the other one is to provide some mental health resources within the schools. This isn't a new grant, it's just some new players coming to the table to help support, so those MOUs will come through in the next couple of weeks. We have the funding for, for the, to support the MOU and the work that they're doing, so. Uh, fiscally, our DOH audit is next month. All of the requirements are due tomorrow, so I think there's only two or three new things left to complete. And those are on my plate, so we'll get those done. We are gonna look, I emailed Jen this morning at incorporating the grant, the smart sheets that she demoed last Thursday. We'd been, Elizabeth has been working on creating our own, and I think Jen's has developed just a little bit more more completely, so we're gonna ask Jen to share that with us and utilize that within our own department, so. And then I did address the revenue that was noted last Thursday, and it has been rectified. That's all on track. Questions about public health?
Questions?
Behavioral health.
Fun one.
Stressful one. Uh, I, I think it's on today's consent agenda. If it's not today, it'll be next week. So I have a fifth, so now I have five DCRs on contract. So now I have nine staff total. Um, I think it's important, there seems to be some confusion within the community that we are providing more services than we are. Currently, we're only providing crisis services. We only respond to the jail, we only respond to the hospital. That being said, as of March 1st, we will also support the schools, so anytime a school calls with a student in crisis, the DCRs will respond to the schools. So now we reduce the three sites, the school, the jail, and the emergency room. We are being audited next month. We are having a site visit. I'm not entirely sure what that looks like. We've asked for what will be audited on. I, that's giving me a little bit of heartburn because we are building this, and I, I'm worried that the request could be prohibitive to actually completing, so we'll see how that goes. We're slowly adding IT equipment as we add staff, so there are two more laptops on the consent agenda today. We are interviewing for a substance use disorder professional the week of March 9th. That's actually a contract requirement for Beacon, and I didn't realize that until recently, but having them onboard and being able to do consults and helping people get in for treatment for substance use, I think is gonna be incredibly valuable to the work that we've been doing so far. We are continuing to support the jail. That seems to be where a lot of our business is, so we're spending a lot of time over there. For January, and I'll work at getting these statistics put together a little bit better, so they look a little bit more like the public health ones. In January, we saw, we had approximately 18 client interactions and performed four detentions, so January is definitely gonna be one of our busier months on the books that we've had, and especially the busiest, I think, since we've started in November. The two biggest issues that we have right now, medication management has become the largest issue that we have. Our understanding is that comprehensive is no longer providing medication management. On the west side, clients are being told to go to Safeway to get medication injections, so there's definitely some concern there. Skyline had supported it for a while and wasn't able to continue providing that. Norshore isn't able to continue, is not able to provide that management as well. So these people are either not getting their medications or having to figure out how to get to Safeway in Hood River to get them, so. I don't have any solutions. We're working on conversations about what that would look like. But just know that that's one of our, our biggest issues that we have right now. To the point where actually transportation is now second, and up until now, transportation's been our biggest concern, so. We, hopefully you'll see a contract for the psychiatrist coming soon. We're working on some language that his malpractice insurance requested, so we're going back and forth with that. Lacey Vilmar has offered to support the program. She's gonna do 20 to 40 hours a week moving for between now and June. She's gonna kind of try to try on the manager role and see if she can manage that kind of with her, with her personal life. So she will do a lot of the staff management. She's helping us with privileging and credentialing that we're required to have maybe by next month and get us up and running for that. And if she feels like that's a job that she would like to continue with, then probably in June sometime, we'll transition where she will take over and I will go back to being public health all the time. I mean, you know. Um, one of the things I think we'll probably ask about soon is when we're looking at our scheduling. We have the two full-time DCRs, and we have contract DCRs. And I think from a scheduling perspective and just logistically, that we'll go back to having the third full-time DCR. That's how our original org chart was, and I'm not entirely sure why we changed that. And so I may ask, we're looking at just kind of hours and times, so I may ask to go back to that third full-time employee. Anyways, that's all I have for behavioral health. Questions?
Oh, I don't have a question. I have a statement. When I was back at NACO, they did a public health workshop, and the main presenter was the executive from Kent County who told us what a great program they have there and how they're handling all the issues, not only there but in the state, so if you have any questions on how to build a great program. Apparently, they got one up there.
They do. They have a lot more resources and money than we do too.
Well, I would question that they have a program.
I will probably see them tomorrow. I will probably see them tomorrow.
Is there any chance that our local hospital pharmacy, the new one they have at the hospital, would entertain being able to do those shots?
I haven't asked. KBH does do some medication management here. Um, I, I think one of the challenges is that the prescriber is from comprehensive. So there's just, you can't just, uh, show up at another medical facility and, and kind of expect, without some sort of MOU or, um, most providers wouldn't sign off on that. It's a little bit of a liability there. So I think that's part of the problem is having a prescriber, um, at a different location and in a different organization than having the medication available, so. It, it's not a good situation. I'm not entirely sure how to fix it. I mean, I am, but it's not something that we can do tomorrow, right? Like, it's a six, six-month plan.
Questions? No, no, no.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Rocking along and thank you for doing what you're doing and all the headaches that we're causing you.
Well, I guess while she's here and, um, we could talk a little bit about the septic problem, because we were talking about the, how we were gonna move forward with that, with the health order and all that. I did a little bit of research and, um, we know that, uh, code compliance hasn't been involved today yet because they didn't get a, a written complaint. And so I found in our own code that a formal complaint can also be made by a county commissioner. And so if you would like, you, there's a formal complaint from the county commissioner, if you'd like to sign that and we can tell George to get started on it.
I don't need to hold up the meeting. I mean, obviously I don't just sign things. I need to read them, so.
So the reason, you know, I don't think we've ever really went that way of making complaints in the past, but this seems to be one of those issues that is continuing to drag on and get sticky and so.
Well, I don't have a problem, um, taking executive action because I think that's what we're hired to do. I don't understand why it isn't a unanimous board decision to take action on an open sewage claim that's next to a well. But if that has to be me throwing myself on the political grenade, I'll be happy to throw myself on a political grenade.
I mean, do you see it as a political grenade?
I thought we had given executive guidance that we were moving forward on the issue without a written complaint. So I'm not understanding the purpose of this. Again, I'll have to read through it.
The, the idea though would be that, you know, we were talking about going the health officer direction, but that still doesn't involve code compliance in any way or issuing a ticket or anything else, and so.
I think this could allow code compliance to go out on their own without the health complaint. And you would be then working it from two different angles, but I would also, I guess, argue that that can be done without a signed complaint, uh, from an individual and/or the board of commissioners. We could just give him verbal executive, go handle it. But that brings up the whole other issue that this board needs to have a workshop and come up with the, not just the code compliance policy in the code, but an actual outlined procedural chart on, here's how you handle a case. Uh, if it doesn't, you know, if they fail you to comply, here's the fine, thirty day, blah, da, da, all those timelines set out. So regardless on whether your name is a fifth generation last name or whether it's somebody that moved here, they're both held equally accountable under the policy, uh, and currently we don't have that, so we need to create that.
And could I, I think it would be important in that line to add how to handle anonymous complaints too. Um, because this was actually, this case was opened based on a call from someone who wanted to remain anonymous. So we put in the complaint to protect that individual.
They're complaining all over Facebook, but nobody will sign a piece of paper.
Yeah, and then the PUD also complained as well, so how to handle.
But they won't find a piece of paper either.
I know, so just within, within that workshop, it would be nice to address that as well.
So that's my hope. Uh, it will be on this Thursday's workshop, but hopefully on the next one, we can get that on there. Uh, we can invite the prosecutor. Hopefully we can sit down and have a nice little roundtable discussion on how we actually fix this issue and set policies and procedures in place going forward. Um, that's my hope anyway.
And I think that can be addressed back to the people too under this notice. There's, it talks about, it has to be signed in the formal way that it has to be done, so they could just receive that note back saying, sorry, can't do anything. You have to do it.
I'm, I'm not sure what you're saying.
Oh, in our code, we have an ordinance. Yeah, our code does line it out that it requires.
Which is why I was saying, like, verbal executive action, I didn't want to put us there and that's why I wrote written verbal, written complaint there.
Okay, well then, since we're bringing it up, if that's, um, acceptable, would you two have your, uh, be willing to have your name on the, the complaint as well?
Who cares? I mean, I just put it as the chairman, so it's a signature from the board. We can make a motion to, to, you know, support this and you sign it.
Let me read it. I might, we might be able to discuss it this afternoon even.
Okay, that was it.
And then talk to the PA too about changing that language.
Um, well, that's gonna take time and we.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a long-term change. And the reason we're a complaint-driven county as opposed to just, you know, you actually have to sign a form and you have to live within a certain mileage, is to keep the, the habitual complainers from complaining about everything. Uh, and next thing you know, they're complaining about Catalina Creek. Uh, and then we actually have to go out and investigate said Catalina, said Creek. And so we're trying to limit, uh, overreach onto the citizens that can be caused by people using this as a weapon, which I'm sure we've all seen this used as a weapon already.
I was just talking about a commissioner versus the board of county commissioners, that language.
Well, I think it doesn't need to have a written complaint if it's a public health hazard like an open septic tank, but.
And I, I read.
For discussion.
I read through a lot this weekend. I looked at other county codes just to kind of help myself understand. And I think potentially what I see is that there's some difference in opinions versus a news, what a nuisance is and what a code violation is. And I think we're getting wrapped around, this is definitely a code violation. Um, it's a little held a little bit different from what I understood standard-wise from maybe what's considered an issue complaint. And how we proceed with that is gonna be different.
Yes, yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
We come back up, ten fifty-eight. Uh, next up, eleven o'clock, Sheriff Bob Songer and staff. You only have one staff with you so far today.
Yes, the other one tied up.
Tied up's better than locked up.
Maybe. Thank you, sir.
You know, I might, uh, obviously I don't expect a response on this at this time. I'll get this pulled in, so. Code compliance, code compliance officer and the code compliance program. Just a thought, put it in the sheriff. I just threw that out. Uh, there, starting out, there were a total of five hundred and ninety-eight calls for service from January first, twenty twenty-three, to February seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. In addition to the calls for service, deputies served a total of a hundred and sixty-two civil papers during the same time period. Second item, on February ninth, we had another meeting with the timber companies in regards to the Range Timber Deputy Program and their share of the cost. Please refer to Chief Civil Deputy Karen Ing's report in regards to the meeting, and she talked to that here in just a little bit. Item three, press release, and those press releases, I might add, are attached to the report there. Date of January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, Clickatuck County Sheriff's Office is responsible for monitoring and registered sex offenders and kidnapping offenders who reside within Clickatuck County. When DOC sends a convicted sex offender or kidnapping offender that's gonna live in our county, they send it. And generally, not every case, but generally, they level them at a one. They leave it up to the sheriff of the county or a committee, but we used to have a committee, and then they'd make a recommendation to the sheriff, but ultimately, the sheriff is a deciding factor by state law. You look at the case and if he's a level one and you believe he's a level one, a low threat to the county, you leave him a level one. If you read the case and it appears that he's a more serious offender, level two or three, then you bump him up to that level and you blanket the neighborhood with the photos of the individual, notify in the neighborhood.
Say that, so you have different things you do based on whether they're a one, two, or a three.
Yes, sir. Yes. And, and that's laid out in the attached press release on that. Number four, press release dated February ninth, twenty twenty-three, road rage stabbing on February sixth. Deputy LaRue, Deputy McBride, and Deputy, or Detective Neer of the Clickatuck County Sheriff's Office, responded to a report of a road rage driving incident involving one driver being stabbed by another driver on Matson Road in Bickle in Clickatuck County. In the press release, we were also looking for a vehicle involved in that, flatbed red truck. Nobody got a plate number, of course. And, uh, so we've reached out the community out there to see if we could get some information on it. This morning, I talked to Bruce Davenport. They seen a pickup, it kind of fits that description down by, uh, over there by, uh, east over by Mapton. And, uh, so we have deputies en route to check it out and see if it falls in there. But that's an open case. Item five, press release, February tenth, domestic violence with a gunshot victim. On February seventh, at approximately nine oh nine PM, Clickatuck County Sheriff's deputies responded to a domestic violent call involving gunshots being fired at one 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 zero Loganberry Lane in White Salmon. The nine-one dispatcher further advised deputies and other responding law enforcement officers, there was a victim with a gunshot wound. Now, in the report, it goes into more detail, uh, I mean, in the, uh, press release. And that case is still under investigation and, uh, the, it was between two brothers. One brother shot the other brother. Then the brother loaded him in a rig and drove him to the hospital. Shooter took the victim to the hospital, so. Anyway, that's all being investigated. The individual did the shooting, was arrested, and, but was released by the prosecuting attorney's office because, for legitimate reasons, the investigation, number one, wasn't completed yet. And number two, if they hold him a certain amount of time in the jail, the sixty-day rule runs and that puts the prosecuting office at a disadvantage because they ought to be prepared to go to trial. So he may end up still being charged. It just depends on the results of the investigation. On January, uh, next item, on January twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, I testified in the Superior Court of Clark County, Washington, on a forty-year-old cold case homicide involving skeleton remains of a female loaded in, located in Clark County. The jury found Warren Leslie Forrest, age seventy-three, guilty of murder in the first degree. Sentencing was scheduled for February seventeenth. The Clark County Superior Court judge sentenced Warren Leslie Forrest to a minimum of twenty years at Walla Walla State Prison, where Forrest is already doing time on a separate murder conviction. I was real pleased with the work, the cold case, people dead there in Clark County. Uh, this is over a forty-year-old case and it was just amazing what DNA can do today in investigations.
So was that, did it have any connection to Clickatuck County while you were down there or is it from your time when you were working?
It was from my time when I was there. I arrested this character on a, he, uh, abducted a gal, slit her throat, stabbed her, did all kinds of horrible things to her, buried her under brush. To his demise, she didn't, she lived and was able to give us enough in the description, we developed probable cause and arrested him. We found on a search warrant, we found her purse in his garage with her ID and all that stuff. He was able to convince people at that time, he had a mental problem, did his time at Western State. But in the meantime, they made him on a separate homicide case and he wasn't able to sell the mental health problem to him at that point. And he got his time, he's been in prison ever since in Walla Walla, and his time for forty years was about to run out. And they just made him on this. They think he's good for about six women, so. Whether he'll, he's seventy-three and he got a minimum sentence of twenty years, uh, he'll die in prison. Hopefully he has some conscience and he would give, and clear up the others for the families. But knowing, knowing Warren, he probably will not, so. Please refer to, uh, undersheriff Carmen Knops' attached report on the patrol and jail activities. I can tell you firsthand, we've been having an extreme problem with, uh, Osborne. Brandon Osborne, he was a convicted, uh, molestation. Uh, he's been a nightmare for the jail, jail and continues to be a nightmare, nightmare for the jail. He tried to hang himself in a jail. His life was saved by the corrections officers. He was actually turning purple and they were able to get him down with, he used a bed sheet and save his life. Of course, there's no gratitude for that coming from Mr. Osborne, I can assure you. But in any event, we ended up having him on suicide watch. He had never mentioned suicide prior to that time, no indication. But now he's on suicide watch and the posse has volunteered to watch. I volunteered some time to watch him so the jailers could continue to do their business. Anyway, apparently there's some mix-up in the paperwork. He was gonna be sentenced this month to go to prison. So they had to extend the sentencing for another month, so we gotta deal with this guy. And we've had to run him up to the hospital and test and stuff. And the reason I tell you all this, because you know the meter's running on these doctor bills and stuff. And unfortunately, we don't have an option. If we refuse it and something's happened, then the lawsuit is much bigger than what would be. Anyway, just a heads up on Mr. Osborne. If it's okay with you folks, I'll turn it over to Karen and let her give her.
Good morning.
Morning.
Can you hear me?
Nope.
I can talk louder. Um, so it's been a busy month. Uh, Carmen and I, um, well, our budget is on track right now. Once these medical bills come in, we'll see where we are on the medical, but, um. And then the Range Timber Program, uh, we've had a second meeting. We had met with them back in December and we had a meeting on February ninth with just some of the timber companies. One of the companies who was not able to make it back in December. So we are progressing. We're gonna actually hold another meeting in March. We're going over not just the dollar or the cents per acre, uh, charge, but we're looking at the duties and what their expectations are. And then we've been reevaluating the times that the deputies will be, uh, working the timber area. Basically, is the seventy-nine hours a month in the season acceptable and the fourteen and a half, or seventy-nine hours of pay period and then fourteen and a half hours in the off-season is basically what they are. off-season is basically what they are working right now. So we're having those discussions and adding things like some additional fire watches and that type of thing. So they are amiable to paying more and covering their third of the program, and they are also, we're looking at adding additional vendors as well, or participants as well, so. Connecting with DNR and some of the others to see if they want us to take a look at their properties, so.
Do, does people like DNR get services now? I mean.
They used to.
Imagine they get services, they're just not having to pay for it.
Well, in the past, they did pay for it. At some point, they dropped out, but when you're, when you're Range deputies going from one area to another, they're crossing state land in DNR, and they see a violation, of course, they take action. It's a benefit to DNR to get on board because Gary Markheim, who's their sergeant, he covers about six or seven counties, and it's impossible for those guys to be up here all the time. And of course, as you well know, you get a lot of squatters that come in at a DNR land, and they're supposed to be there fourteen days and move up. If they're not checked on, six months later, they've got their house built and all that stuff.
That's the main kicker I was going for there.
Yeah.
So we'll be proceeding with that, and we've got regularly scheduled meetings. We're hoping that the next one we can have in this building, where we can accommodate more people rather than in the sheriff's office, because that room is kind of small.
If you're available.
We're here to serve, wherever we can be. Body worn camera program is working well, everybody's utilizing it, and in the patrol side, jail's still getting their system fine-tuned because we're one of the pioneering jails for this, so. And then K-9 program, so the reason that Under Sheriff Knops is not here right now is she is over at former Deputy Marbles' residence, and they are dismantling the K-9 castle. And they will be reassembling it at Adam Diamond's residence, so we have movement.
That's going to be the last item that needs to be picked up to close that situation?
Correct.
I thought so, okay.
Yeah. Prophy is doing well. He did have a little strain on his, on one of his tendons, and so we're just not having him do long-distance running or sprinting or anything like that, but he can walk and track, so he's still enjoying being back at work. Thank you for signing on the Marine program, thank you for signing that contract. I drove it up to the boating program last Wednesday and met with them, and they gave us a whole bunch of promo material for the county and all of our fairs, festivals, rodeos, and events this year that deal with boating, and stickers, and just all kinds of handy tools. But they also said that they would, and we've had this conversation last summer, they will agree to lend us the Osprey that we wanted to utilize. So while our boat is being repaired, and even though we do have two jet skis, we will, they will be sending us an MOU for a one-year lease on, one-year loan on their big Osprey. So it'll provide us a little more safety in the water and be able to get to people. When our boat comes back, we will house the old boat down in the White Salmon area, so we'll have two ways to get to the water faster, no matter which side of the county you're on, so we can be of service if something goes awry, which sometimes it does.
And that loaner boat, there's no cost to it?
Yeah, it's just the insurance and the maintenance on it, which those funds come out of the boating program, so it's no effect on the general fund.
Did we ever figure out what caused our boat to leak? Was it a bad weld, was it bad rivets, did we hit a rock?
I have not heard why, yeah.
There was some speculation that when you pull it up onto the trailer, that might have caused some of that, but I'm not a boating person, I would not ever clue.
They are.
That's why I'm lost, I'm dying to know because I'm.
Yeah, well, and they will be looking at the trailer and.
The bunks.
Yeah.
You're a boating person, so you have some idea, wouldn't you?
So we are going to be meeting with all of the Marine Patrol. We've got schedules that they will have to follow in order to stay part of the Marine Patrol so that we can keep our program. And we had submitted a corrective action plan this year because we did not meet the number of hours on the water or the inspections. So anything over sixteen feet and ten horsepower needs an inspection, and we can do those also in other counties like Skamini County that doesn't have a boating program. So we're going to be working with them to also come down to their ramps and spend some time in their water as well, because, as you know, when you're out on the Columbia, there is no dividing line between counties, really. There's.
There is.
There is, but there, but there's no.
If there's criminal charges, that there is.
Yeah.
But there is no, no safety net for the boaters down in Skamini County, so we are, we're one of the closer places.
How does that work for your deputies that are on Marine Patrol? Do they do the Marine Patrol work in, like, overtime hours?
Correct.
Or do they, they don't do day shift hours?
No, it is, it is paid a hundred percent overtime when they are.
But it's not taking someone off the street to put somebody down in Skamini to look for a boat ramp violation?
Exactly, yeah. This is, this is overtime, and that's what the program pays for, it's understood that it's.
I just want to make sure we're not pulling somebody off the street.
No, we're not, the only time we would pull somebody off the street is if we had a call come in that is a boating call.
Emergency.
Emergency, then we would either, if we've got a Marine Patrol deputy on at that time, they will just go grab the boat and attend to the emergency.
In the worst-case scenario, we're going to tie up somebody off the road, we have people that are on call going back, so they'd be called out to work.
We call them.
Makes sense.
And then finally, the Posse program is growing. We've been swarring in a number of new people, so the program is being successful with filling in, like, front office, yeah. And then we've got a group that will be helping convert the medical records in the jail to electronic records. We've got, because they're CGIS compliant, and, you know, so that person that's a Posse member is donating her time to convert those records, and we always make sure that they're compliant with any law enforcement rules. And then we'll also be going over and cleaning our Brook Street storage room. We've got lots of old uniforms that need to just be dismantled and shredded, things like that, so that's a perfect task for the Posse. And we actually have a seamstress now on the Posse who is willing to do a lot of the removal of patches, so previously, we would pay for that, so. Small tasks add up, and we've been hosting, we've got three requests for neighborhood watches throughout the county, and so we're building that program larger.
How many Posse members do you have now, or do you have that number on the top of your head?
It's about one fifty-six. And twelve percent of them are able to carry a firearm, and so you're only talking about a few people.
That's an interesting number.
It's in line with the report I wrote last year for the insurance company. And we tackle the tasks that need to be done and match them with the skills that the people have. So former law enforcement and former military, they may have a different task than, say, someone who's an office clerk or something, so we match what their skills are. And we also have a former Army gentleman who, he actually worked in the White House as communications, and he does phenomenal graphic design for us. And he's taken some of the promo material and made small flyers, so next year, we'll have preparing, winter weathered preparedness, and he's made small flyers for kids plus adults. So, you know, they're coming up with, oh, I can do this and reach the community this way, so. And graphic design is inexpensive, and so having somebody available to do that, too, I mean, so we are reaching out to the community and minimizing our expense on the budget, so.
I might add, if somebody that's listening in or whatever might be a little concerned about that twelve percent armed.
One of them was me before I got this job, so I was one of those twelve percent, so.
Yes, they go through classroom certification, NRA, and also certify on the range before they can carry in uniform. And they go through the rules and the laws and use a deadly force. Obviously, with a Posse member, it's a last resort to save somebody's life or their own. So we take it very serious, although I'm a big Second Amendment guy, but I want them qualified if they're on, if they're carrying in uniform especially. I did have one question, you got more to go?
Oh, I was just going to say, this month's training for the Posse is policies and procedures, we do it every year, so.
Yeah. I noticed there was, I think it's this coming Friday, maybe, elected officials for the public disclosure training.
Thursday.
Thursday. I would like to, if possible, have Karen with me, and the reason I say that, she's going to be the one getting the request. And, and when you get my age, you might forget to pass some stuff on, so she's pretty sharp, if that would be okay.
I, you're, I don't have a problem with it, this, you saying this is for elected officials is the first time I've heard this is.
That's the way it came across.
I think it's for anybody.
It's for everybody, I think.
I think it's for anybody and everybody, so. Because we started this because we need our personnel to know, we need our boards and commissions to know, so whoever you feel might need or receive FOIA requests or any of that.
Thank you.
Feel free to send it.
Yeah, appreciate that.
If you need it throughout the year, say something, we'll try to schedule another one.
Appreciate that very much, yeah.
I'll be there.
Well, I, well, I have to hop out for another meeting in the middle, but.
Sure.
What time is set up?
That is from nine to one. And then I have our new insurance board orientation from ten to noon, so I'll get each part of that. Was that all you had for us before? What I've been thinking about, and I haven't brought this up to my seatmates, so I might be out of place or out of turn. I myself have always tried to testify on some of this legislation coming out of the state that's a little whack. We, as a board, have decided that once the, the end date for legislation, which was this last Friday, we're going to start looking at legislation that we can agree on as a board, that we want to either support or oppose, and then make comment on the record for it. So I would also encourage, I would imagine that we see the same things you see, but I would also encourage that if you have any kind of list of numbers of bills that you would recommend the county take a formal position on, submit that over to us to look at, just in case we missed one.
I appreciate that very much. March fourth, Saturday, nine A M. to noon, Republican Party is putting on a, addressing a certain legislation, which we feel is bad legislation, at the Centerville Grange, and at the top of that will be the anti-gun movement, Second Amendment. And the one that really is concerning, and should be concerning, whether you're in law enforcement or just a citizen, is the substitute bill, House Bill thirteen thirty-three.
I testified on that one already.
Okay, you're familiar with it, right? Yeah. Wow, that one is scary.
A lot of them are scary.
You bet, you bet.
Getting scarier.
Yeah. But if you have an opportunity to attend this Centerville meeting, it'll be, it'll be several speakers there on different legislative stuff, but primarily, it's going to be Second Amendment, and the gun control and that type of thing. There's several things that bother me about the gun, when they say they banned all assault weapons, assault weapon terminology is used to scare people, then what they're really talking about is any semi-automatic rifle. Then they got a whole litany list of what guns fall into that category. But what bothers me is bad enough if they're successful in banning the semi-automatic rifle in the state of Washington, but they follow it up with another bill that if you say, okay, I can no longer buy a semi-automatic rifle to go deer hunting or whatever, I'm going to buy me a lever-action or bolt-action, I don't want to go elk hunting. Can't do that, you got to get a permit first from the state. To me, that is a clear, in my opinion, a clear violation of the Second Amendment.
But they're not going to keep a database on gun owners, though.
Of course not.
They're not going to do that.
And if you got them now, you can keep them till next legislative session, so anyway.
So, yeah, I, I don't know, I know for myself, and I'll speak for myself, that on all of those bills, that I'm sure we are step in step. As part of WASAC, Washington Association of Counties, that I go up for the Leg Steering Committee, that group is largely step in step with us. But as you know, we're the minority in the legislature. We're pushing on that front, but I also think each county needs to do its part, each board needs to do its part, each commissioner needs to do its part, and each citizen needs to do their part and testify as well.
Amen.
I don't, I don't believe the citizens show up enough to the legislature to make that point. You can get ten thousand hairdressers to show up, and that'll change the law.
Right.
But a lot of times on some of these guns laws, the citizens just complain back home, and they don't testify, and you got, you got to get them to testify.
Right. And the Washington State Sheriff's Association came out with a letter to the governor indicating that they're willing to work with him, but they're not going to violate people's constitutional rights, basically is what it is under the Second Amendment. They suggested maybe putting more repeat offenders in jail might shut it, shut down on the crime. But, you know, I read an article, and I don't want to say it's true, I believe it's probably true, where our governor is releasing a bunch of sex offenders out into the public. And I had a lady email me, Sheriff, how can we prevent one of these level-three, the real bad guys, coming into our county? Well, we can't prevent them from moving into our county, but we can certainly keep a close eye on them and let wherever they land, let that neighborhood know who they are.
So far, we have zero in our county of the ones that I think you're referring to of the releases from his latest bachelor releases. We did at WASAC, one of the commissioners shared a map and a document of which county has how many.
Right.
And surprisingly, we had zero, otherwise, I would have shared the map with you when I got back from that meeting.
Yeah, so far, I think you're spot on, I don't think.
For now.
Got any of them yet.
For now.
Yeah. Crazy.
Yeah, that concern was also addressed in our meeting.
Yeah.
That's all I had, and sorry to go so off-topic for everybody. Does anybody else have anything for Mr. Sheriff, or Ms. Karen? No, 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 cool.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you for the update, thank all your staff, and I liked the part in your memo here that you were going to do the Survey Monkey for the career advancement and training, I think that's very important in all departments, so.
Yeah, we use that, we use that, and we've received all the responses back except for the two on extended leave, so it's functioning.
Good, perfect, thanks. Any other morning business? We don't have a very busy afternoon, so we may as well just leave board pending this afternoon. Any other morning business that you guys want to take? Any other morning business that you guys want to take care of before lunch?
I'm good.
I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we recess for lunch.
I second.
Motion is second to recess for lunch. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. See everybody back at 1 o'clock. All righty, it is 1 o'clock. We're going to call our regular meeting of the Clicktack County Commissioners to order. Let the record show, all three commissioners are present. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Chairman, I would make.
Mike?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda as presented.
And I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion as second to approve the business agenda as presented. Any comment? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the business agenda, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the Commissioner meeting minutes from January 31st, 2023, and February 7th, 2023 as presented.
I will second that motion.
All right, we have a motion as second to approve the minutes. Any comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the January 21, 2023 minutes and the February 7, 2023 minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. With that, we'll move on to citizen comment. Citizen comment will be three minutes. We should have a clock running on the screen for all you people on Zoom land.
It's ready.
And all the people in the room, you can pay attention to the screen as well. With that, we always start in the room. Is anybody in the room have citizen comment? One thing I forgot to add is we normally respond to citizen comment at the end. So once your comment, don't just think we're ignoring you, hang out until the end. Not seeing anyone in the room just yet, so we'll go online. I see a hand up from a Becky Miles. Please state your name and general location in the county for the record, please.
My name is Becky Miles, and I'm from White Salmon. And I have a question for the county commissioners and/or Sheriff Songer, whoever can answer it. I see we have some funding for $670,000 for an animal shelter. And I know from friends in Clicktack and Lyle, and those are also associated with people in Goldendale, who are all really struggling with a lot of volunteer hours, trying to, you know, keep the cats neutered and, and fixed. And I'm just thinking we're really in need of these services. And I'm wondering where we are, if, you know, if something, a project has been started for a building or anything. I just basically need to know where we are with a shelter and wondering what type of facility that would be. And wondering also if the dollars from, for that could also be used for public education about spaying and neutering, or maybe even financial assistance to help people who can't do that with their pets. So lots of questions in one, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miles. Anybody else in the room have public comment? Seeing none, we'll go back online. Anybody online, anonymous, anonymous assistants with a lot of.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, name and general location for the record, sir.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Perhaps you believe you are here because of some great ability you have, which resulted in you winning the election to your position as county commissioner. You are here because the creator of the universe, the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, has given you life and allowed you to be elected. The world we live in is in trouble. Many organizations and governments and families have collapsed because those in charge do whatever is necessary to avoid speaking just six words. I'm sorry, I made a mistake. Tens of thousands of innocent people in Turkey and Syria are injured or dead because the building regulations for construction were not obeyed in earthquake-prone areas. Currently, there is a stormwater drainage, oh, I forgot to tell you, my name is Raymond Clough from Dalspur.
We're aware, but.
Apparently, there is a stormwater drainage problem in Dalspur. The four-way stop intersection at Central Boulevard and Sixth Ave floods covering half of the road and in the winter freezes. Mr. Willis, Mr. Wallace built and sold eight houses on Central Boulevard. No ditches or culverts were installed as required by county code. And there are no plans for culverts on the driveways of the new approved subdivision. What will you say to the parents of a child who is injured or killed because a vehicle in the subdivision cannot stop at the intersection due to ice on the road? The sub, this subdivision's approved plat contradicts the rules for division of land in the state of Washington, which requires every decision or recommendation made under this section shall be in writing and shall include findings of fact and conclusions to support the decision or recommendation or C W 5817100, review of preliminary plats. The purpose of R C W 58 is for the land to be divided in a uniform manner. The currently approved plat map states, each lot shall be responsible for their own drainage. Or drainage details and requirements, she report recorded. This is an obvious violation of R C W 58. The approval of resolution number 01421 in January 2021 is a violation of your oath of office in which you agreed to uphold the laws of the state of Washington. When you took the oath of office, was your hand on a Bible? At the January 21st meeting, the agenda packet included 10 pages, emails, the future amended map showing the lot configuration change, and the original resolution from 2018, number 128218. A text document of comments regarding the Wallace subdivision amendment from Jeff in Public Works. There were no findings of fact and conclusions as required. I asked the planning department for a public records request of the communications relevant to the amendment, and I was told it would take 30 days. Why the discrepancy? Just a few simple words with the right attitude can make a big difference. I'm sorry, I made a mistake. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Clough. We'll go back in the room. Anybody in the room have, seeing none, back online? Anybody online, please raise your hand, unmute yourself. Public comment pertaining to anything to do with issues inside our county? No, there's one, Gabrielle Gilbert, go ahead. Name and general station, sorry.
Hi. So first off, thank you, Lori, Commissioner Lori Zoller, for the email expressing that you are now on the childcare committee. I look forward to seeing the work that you do. I sent an email with a list of things that I have spoken to people and been working on. I would really like to be able to meet, especially with a woman who spent 30 years doing home daycare called The Little Rascals, and she can speak to the regulation, what works, what doesn't for home daycare, and her experience of 30 years of childcare. I spoke to Brian Walsh from the Solar Company, and I, I just want to say that I think it's time for the county to address the million-plus dollars that come in from these green energy taxable yearly rates that you receive, and how a portion of that can be put into the area of childcare to address our desert. And I feel that the skin in the game, when these companies come in and they basically get land that is at a much cheaper taxable rate, which I, I have no problem with whatever a landowner wants to do with their land. But I do want these companies to start donating to the nonprofits that would address childcare in the county and, and to just the idea that they would give stuff, be able to help improve the lives of childrens and families here by, by the money that they bring in. And finally, on the posse, when Songer first arrived, it was 50 posse members that he introduced the county to. Now it's 156, and now we have 19 of them that are armed. That insurance of when you have a wrongful death suit lawsuit because somebody took somebody's life for, I, I don't have words for that. Like, I don't, I don't understand how we as a county take that liability. What are those insurance dollars for those 19 armed? And, and is it only 19? Because it's my understanding that there is encouragement by the sheriff for the posse to be armed. I, I want to understand how the guys who helped you at the fair and the lovely people that volunteered to take, you know, patches off and all of those lovely volunteer things, all of a sudden now we're dropped with this, oh, they've done their training and they've got weapons and if, and if there's, and, and they can shoot citizens, like, how is this possible? And how is the county going to address that? Because if you have a lawsuit, all I see is a daycare that could have been built, and instead it's going into a lawsuit or into insurance rates that are going to be outrageous. So I'd really like a discussion on that. Thank you for your time.
Pay better attention. All right, back in the room, seeing nothing back online. Anybody online have citizen, Pat Arnold, go ahead.
Good afternoon. I have two comments. One is, I believe you have a workshop this week on February 23rd, and there's an item on that workshop from three to four board follow-up impending issues. Oh, no, it's 1 o'clock. Continued discussion regarding planning land use issues. I think that those workshops are not available on Zoom. And so I'd like to know how those of us who want to know what's being discussed about planning land use issues can obtain that information. It's not possible to drive to Goldendale on Thursday, and it often isn't. So that's one thing. How can we get updated on what's being discussed at that workshop on Thursday? The other thing is, the Charlie Community Council is wondering, because Commissioner Zoller has joined recently, and the decision to hire a long-range planner to deal with comprehensive plan was taken before her time on the commission. So curious to know if there's still a commitment on the part of Board of County Commissioners to updating the county's comprehensive plan. We definitely want to stay in touch with that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Sorry for the pause there, I was taking notes. Anybody else that hasn't spoken have citizen comment for us? Seeing none in the room, let's go back online, 7211, go ahead.
Greg Wagner with C. I'd like to ask the commissioners if they can provide transportation for the elderly people who want to testify at next Tuesday's public hearings. We have people asking, saying they can't get to the meeting, they'd like the, the hearing, they'd like to testify in person. Can the county provide transportation for them? Number two, the wind corporations came in here about 2004 and they made big promises. Lower utility rates, lower taxes, they were going to do so much for our county. Now we hear the same thing from Avon Grid and Cypress Creek. They're going to give us all this money, but yet we don't see much improvement. We don't see all that. What we do see is that the county assessor uses the cost method of appraisal, which gives these corporations an eight-and-a-half percent annual depreciation on their personal property, which in turn lowers the amount of tax revenue the county receives. For Ms. Gabrielle Gilbert, that would help her with her problem on daycare. If we were to receive all the money we should be receiving, but that's our county's fault and it needs to be corrected. Last week, Mr. Commissioner Christopher said, I'll get every penny I can from them. It's time to step up and do that. These corporations make billions while they give us millions, which we think is a lot. But every year that money diminishes because we don't assess their property, their personal property correctly. And as far as Mrs. Arnold, Ms. Arnold, the Zoom meetings should be recorded, the workshop should be recorded. It costs $16.11 a month for Zoom, and the county has a free YouTube account where they could put all these meetings on it. So in the sake of transparency and for the good of all the citizens like Ms. Arnold that can't come all the way to Goldendale and participate in a workshop, that should be, that should be utilized. It won't cost the county a dime for data space when you have a YouTube account that you can utilize for free. So I ask that you start doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Anybody else have citizen comment? Sherry Buskey, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Clicktack County Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to do public comment and bring awareness to your attention of, of situations in our county that perhaps you don't know of. Yesterday, in my mailbox, I received two flyers, one to my husband, one to myself, from a group claiming to be Clicktack County Residents for Homegrown Energy. I'm very upset about this because I'm on the inside of all this information. This is Cypress Creek, and I'm alleging this, yes, that this is who this comes from, these postcards, trying to form a group that says support private property rights in Clicktack County. Nowhere on this postcard does it identify that they are the Solar Corporation that wants to build Carriage Your Project off Knight Road. So I feel this to be somewhat fraud to our people. And just so we can, and maybe somebody can weigh in on this, let's just set the record straight. There's such a thing as zoning, so nobody can do anything they want with their private property. We have zoning, so that myth needs to be put to rest. So I wanted to bring to your attention what I feel is these large corporations who manipulated, who've done petitions in other places to try to gain leverage. They're playing hard in our county right now. They're spending lots of money and time to spread their propaganda. I do not believe there is any group, Clicktack County Residents for Homegrown Energy, that is a grassroots people ran from our local community. And I want to bring to your attention their petition that they have, a code you can scan to sign an electronic petition. And I, I quite honestly will question that. So you, I warned you who these corporations are, who their parent companies are, and how they will bring legal suit, and they will play with counties for keeps. So please, as we enter into this moratorium and you see what they're pulling in our county, that you realize that we have a need for regulation as we've asked for two years for a large-scale solar. And, you know, and we also have a need for oversight. I don't see my clock, so I don't know how much time I have left.
18 seconds.
When conditional use permits and things are put into place, like Lund Hill is supposed to have a monthly meeting to report where they're at, we need more oversight on these, on these projects. There's no oversight on conditions on projects, so that needs to, I think, get stepped up, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buskey. Making notes, sorry. Some very good points brought up today, and I want to make sure I make a note of them. All righty, 118, we'll go back in the room, seeing nothing. Go back online, anybody else online have public comments? Anybody in the room, public comment? Oh, there we go, Lynn Mason, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, thank you for listening to my comment today. I wanted to speak about the animal shelter and just, I just found it a little bit disconcerting that it wasn't brought up in the sheriff's presentation today because it really is an important service that our county needs. And it's the third top call that the sheriff's office gets. And right now, we are relying on veterinary offices to house these stray pets or dangerous pets or whatever. And we need to really address the situation. As someone who worked at Home at Last Animal Shelter in the Dalles, and I may have mentioned this before, but. and I may have mentioned this before, but there were times that we were, the shelter had to ban animals coming from Cookinac County because there are so many, so many animals coming from Cookinac County that it was overwhelming the shelter in the Dells. And that happens on a regular basis there. So this is a problem that our county has to address. We have to address and take care of and not put it on bordering counties to to deal with. And that's why I keep bringing it up. And that's why I'm, I was excited to hear that there's six hundred seventy thousand dollars for an animal shelter. And I would ask that the county commissioners procure a copy of the original grant request that was submitted so that the left hand knows what the right hand is doing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. Anybody else have citizen comment? Seeing none. Do we want to get into responses a little bit early since we've been running along on our responses? Do either of my seatmates have responses to these about eight individuals? Either of my seatmates. Or we can wait for four more minutes if you need more time. Last call, citizen comments? Nothing. All right, let's open it up for rebuttal or response. Either of you, which one wants to start? We'll alter, we'll do one, one week, we'll do the other day.
My seatmates may have more information on the animal shelter questions. The last that I knew, it had gone back to Sheriff Songer for some investigations about those buildings. And they were going to do some checking out what kind of facility and and actual costs and then come back to us again. So, yes, we did not hear anything today. So we can ask Sheriff Songer that question in the upcoming week too and and get back to you on that. And Raymond, I will commit to go down and talk to Jeff in the road department and get caught up on that issue on Central Boulevard. I've been super busy as a new commissioner. I did see the application and the paperwork and I'll commit to to go down and just check into some things and answer some of your questions. And I look forward to working with you, Gabby, on childcare. It's going to be an interesting journey to see what we can come up with. And I do know that there is that lack in Cookinac County. I've experienced it and even my own children are experiencing it, trying to work with children. Pat, the land use planning at the workshop, I agree workshops are hard to get to when you live in Trout Lake, Washington. And I'm sure we'll have a discussion about notes or whatever is available online so you can catch up on those issues. I'll have to ask my seatmates how that happens. But we are committed to the comp plan. And that is a subject that we're going to be talking about getting going on the comp plan and how the critical area ordinance and shoreline fits into that so that we can get those done together. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Madam President.
Just to add a little bit to the funding of the animal shelter, I believe the sheriff's department is working on a business plan. So that it's one thing to build something, it's another thing to operate it. And so that's what we've been asked for, asking for is is a full business plan. With regards to Mr. Wagner and considering transportation of elderly people to testify, our dial a ride service with seniors is primarily to get people to medical appointments, not to usually bring them in to testify. I don't think that's ever been used, but we do have our regular fixed bus routes that people can use. If you would like to get people to the meeting, you could create, you know, a group of people willing to go and pick people up and bring them in. That's not something that the the county gets involved in. With regards to the eight and eight and a half percent that lowers tax revenue, again, we are not the county assessor. You have an individual elected in that position that has control over those decisions. And with regards to Sherry, I have not seen this flyer. I have heard about it. I have no idea who the residents for homegrown energy are, and I wouldn't make assumptions about who they are or not. But you said you have some ins, you're on the inside of the info. So if you could share any of that, feel free to send me an email. And Ms. Mason, we were, we totally missed out this morning on asking the sheriff for an update with regards to the animal shelter. But sorry about that. And, oh, and then in terms of an original grant request, I don't believe there was a grant request. I think it was directed spending at the legislature, but I'm not one hundred percent sure on that. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. So since you left off with dog shelter, I'll go back on a dog shelter. Yes, this was not the county asking for a grant. This was not the county asking for an appropriation. I think this was done through the legislature and the sheriff department on the side. The county was unaware of it until recently, and we're still not necessarily in the loop. So how I foresee that working, just like anything else, is the dollars we currently have in our budget are already itemized out and and spent before we received them, providing the products and services that we're currently offering the the community. If there's going to be a new program, it's going to need a new way of funding. So my guess is, and this is only a guess from one commissioner that does not have money to spend on an animal shelter, that once a detailed budget of not only the build, but the next, you know, ten, twelve, twenty years of operation come through, do we know how much this is actually going to cost the taxpayers year over year? Then the nonprofit group or the group of citizens or whoever that are applying for this appropriation or grant will then have to run it past the county. And the county will more than likely have to put a levy on a ballot to let the people decide whether they want to raise their taxes to pay for said dog shelter. And that's more than likely how I would see or envision that process going. Where it's at in the process, I don't know, because again, this is not a county project. So that that's a side issue that's for them and not necessarily for citizen comment with the county. To Gabrielle about green energy taxes used for childcare. Again, the money that green energy companies currently, what, about six and a half million dollars in windmills every year? That gets appropriated into your sheriff's department, into your court, into your probation, public health, senior services auditor, all that money is already currently spent in general operation and providing the services we currently have. So in order to fund a childcare with that, you would need to have a separate amount of money or, like you said, make the green energy companies donate to five oh ones. That I wholeheartedly agree with you on there. It's called community benefit. That's a bill that we were trying to get introduced in the legislature this year through WASC or Washington State Association of Counties to try to make sure these green energy companies had to have some community benefit and some community buy in. And yes, the solar companies are opposing that. And they have their legislators from the Fugitive Sound area more than likely going to strip that wordage out of the bill. But I agree with you, they should want to donate and invest in the communities they're around. But it doesn't mean that you can mandate them without them wanting to. Everything else has pretty much been handled, transportation to a hearing. I was going to handle that, same thing. Cost met it. I I would correct Mr. Wagner that the cost for Zoom for the county is much different than the cost for personal, just like Microsoft, Google, anybody else, or a corporate account. We get to pay all the big money so that they can charge citizens very little. So and we can't rely on all of our recordings just being stored on YouTube because if YouTube got hacked and we lose our recordings and we can't provide you with a document, now we pay you a fine because we can't provide you with a FOIA request. So all of our documents, even if on YouTube, would still need to be stored by a separate and secured company in the cloud. And that's where the cost is going to come in. Sherry, I agree with you on the postcards. I would question, I've seen the postcard, one of them anyway. It's funny, it's kind of like they're asking for the same thing that Cease is asking for in a way, an open and fair process where the citizens get to speak their mind. So technically, the solar company should be very happy about the moratorium because that's kind of what it says on the postcard. But I'd also would hate to speculate on whether Cypress sent the postcard because there's two other solar companies that are very, very close to dropping a permit application. So it could have been either one of those. And I could also say that it could have been the union trying to the laborers' union because they've been actively involved in in complaining about the moratorium. Because the first people that got these were union members. So potentially could be labor union that sent them too. So I would hate to jump to conclusions and think that it was one over the others. But I agree, I thought them in bad form. Mr. Mason on the, or Ms. Mason on the dog shelter, I think I covered that. I would question your third highest calls because we got the call log from the sheriff today. And animals, total animals, including vicious animals, which is coyotes and cougars and everything else, which aren't dogs that would go in an animal shelter. If you combine everything, it's only seven percent of his actual calls. So third highest, there's many other things on here suspicious persons, thefts, traffic hazards, traffic violations, trespassing, violations of court order, wanted persons, welfare check, motor vehicle accident, I I could go on and on that have far more calls than the standard animal calls. So I I agree with part of your statement, but I just wanted to disagree with the third highest number of calls on there. And I'm sure if you wanted this document, the the sheriff or the clerk would probably have a copy of this that they can send his latest call log that we get on each one of our updates. It's also should be, was it in our agenda packet? No, it was. Okay, it was not in our agenda packet. So you'd have to ask us or the sheriff's office for that. And then hopefully that can help you know exactly how many calls, even though they are listed as animals and not necessarily a dog. You got a sick animal, it could be a raccoon, it could be a cow, it could be, who knows? Anyway, I think that about cover set. And we're three minutes over time. So with that, we will make an end to citizen comment. Hopefully y'all got at least some of the answers you were hoping for.
Can we ask about the posse?
Ma'am, there's no second comments. I don't know what your exact question is with the posse, but at this point you'll need to take that up offline and email or call a commissioner. We are moving on. We don't have any public hearing scheduled. New business. Second, throw on new business.
Sure.
So working with WASC, you guys are kind of aware that I, we're working on trying to get the legislature to help do a study and or help create funding down the road to help improve remodel, repair, rebuild county jails because that cost is going to be absolutely immense. The previous board always thought this building was more imperative. The next big ticket item was going to be jail. So anyway, WASC was doing studies and polls. I forwarded it over to Carmen, she filled it all out, sent it all back. They have a letter that's included here that we'll pass around before we vote on it and sign it to the senators that are not on Ways and Means because they've already got the letter and they already get our testimony of which Senator King is not. So they asked us to send a letter from the county to our specific senator, asking them to get on board with the money for the jails. So I'll pass that document around for you guys to read and then we can discuss whether we want to sign it later. I know I had other fun things that we needed to discuss that were kind of a new business thing. Oh, we got the email concerning Mr. Wilcox at the airport that wants to buy a hangar and build a hangar and whether that's conflict of interest. And I think we need to, we need to discuss that or we need to send it over across the street for a legal opinion. Because my first take on it, if you're going to build something that you're going to profit on in the airport, but then you want to sit on the airport board, which every decision you make could affect the revenue stream coming out of the building you made, I I do believe that's conflict. And I don't know how you would continue to do both. I would think you'd either own the building and make a profit off the airport usage or you'd sit on the airport board. I don't see how you can do both. But I don't know where you guys are at on that or whether you wanted a legal opinion on that or we just need to make a decision on that.
I would think that, I mean, you're going to abide by all the rules of the airport. And you are asking for no special favor than anyone else. You're going to make your lease payments just like everyone else. Sure, he said he wouldn't vote on his own application. But other than that, why would that create a conflict of interest for the future?
Well, I think because anything you do, if you're voting on airport expansion or where other hangars go or where we're going to put a six inch water line, all those decisions could affect the value of the hangar you bought and are leasing to the airport. And so every one of those decisions actually impacts you personally because you have an investment that you might be voting to improve the value of your investment. I I just believe it raises the, I mean, every decision you make on the airport board could be affecting the value or the resale value of the hangar that you bought and are operating. That to me is an absolute conflict of interest. I mean, I guess I'd say it's the same idea. If we were going to vote to pave the road I live on, I I probably shouldn't vote on that. If we were talking about putting in a water line or electrical pole or something in front of my house that would obviously drive up my value, resale value, I probably shouldn't vote on that. This is kind of the same scenario with this guy. This guy's has house or a hangar potentially. And every decision down there is going to essentially voucher affect the value or the rental rate or the whatever of that property. And that is a conflict of interest because now you're voting on something that's going to make you a fiscal gain.
So two things. Number one, the airport board is, for the most part, not decision makers. We are the decision makers. They're advisory. Number two, I think, you know, with regards to it being like if you were going to pave the road by your house, you would recuse yourself from it. And he's stating in his letter that he's going to recuse himself from that vote. But after that, he abides by all the same rules and standards of everything else. So by your statement of whether you have a hangar or you're leasing a hangar, so what you would then be saying is anybody who flies an airplane or rents out a hangar there would be disqualified from serving on the airport board because there's a conflict of interest. Because every decision is going to have an impact on the airport. I just don't, the the link is very tenuous and I don't think it holds enough water. But if you would like to send it over to the P A for his opinion, I have no problem with that.
For me, that's where I'm going to need. If he looks at it and says he doesn't have a problem with this, then I'm reading too much into it. And and I sign off, but I can't get there without it because to me it's just it, you know, I don't know that it classifies as, you know, immoral or any of that kind of stuff. It's just to me, it's bad form. And and it's not something that I would do, granted not, most people And it's not something that I would do, granted not, most people are me. So, if possible, and my seatmates are open to it, I would like to hear what the prosecutor said about, you know, would think about whether that is a conflict to keep us off a hook potentially from litigation later, if it does turn out to be a conflict.
And I think your question isn't the initial, because he said he's gonna recuse himself, you're asking, does owning a building on the airport disqualify you from holding a seat on the airport board? That's, that's your question, because...
Essentially, does him owning this building, if he buys this building and builds this building, would that mean it's a conflict for him to sit on the airport board and make votes that could essentially affect his financial future of his new building by sitting on that board after fact? I understand he's gonna recuse himself from the airport board vote to authorize him to build a building, because they're all gonna authorize him to build a building. My worry is all the future votes after that. Does, does he make a vote there that benefits him personally over the decision that benefits the county? And I understand they're an advisory board, and if that's the case, I've been here over two years and none of them have been up there advising me of anything. So, I would call the question whether they're actually an advisory board at this point too, but that's a whole nother discussion for another day. Do you have any comments on this, ma'am?
The saving grace is probably advisory board. And I think if you looked, a lot of people on the board have a very big interest in the airport, that's why they're there, as an advisory board. Probably the PA should look at it. And then to throw this out there, what's the difference of us being Klickedat County Commissioners and voting on things, and I buy land in Klickedat County? You know, you're kind of...
I get where you're both are coming from.
Yeah. But I, you know, for me, was your question if we need the PA to ask that, that question up, probably them.
Well, I guess it, if you wanna do it as a two against one, we can say it doesn't matter, and we don't need to send it to the prosecutor. If you would like it to be unanimous, we're gonna need to get it there first, so however you guys wanna go with it, I'm fine with it. Was I leaning back too far? Sorry. I'm sorry, I, when I switch from seatmate to seatmate, I try to lean back so they can see each other when they're talking, and they don't have to look through me, because I'm like the Great Wall of China up here. So, yeah, I kinda, sorry, I'll scoot forward. So, I, you know, if you, if you guys don't need it to be unanimous, it can just go through, it's no problem if you want it to be unanimous, I need it, I need it legal.
Well, I feel like he's done disclosure and did his due diligence and wrote letters, and it is an advisory board, and he's offered to step down on decisions that would impact that. And being an advisory board, I don't know how it could come back any different.
I, as I already said earlier, that I think every, we should always be able to send a PA opinion request and not have to, you know, fight for it. So, I would say let's send the PA opinion request over.
Okay.
All right. Then that's what we will do.
And just for the record, he doesn't represent the county, he represents the city.
I know.
Okay. I have no problem signing this letter. The geomodernization proviso, are you good with it?
Yes.
Okay. That handles that one too.
Other new business?
Go ahead.
We also had two emails now, over a little period of time, about a week, we can have a part in regards to a grant, a community grant for a development in that area down in Dallasport, that there was an entity asking us to help with the Sundune properties. There's a grant available for green housing, I think it was for?
Fee pays or financing?
It's a different type of financing.
Okay.
Not a grant.
Okay. I just thought, since we have a second email on it, maybe it's something we should talk about in a draft.
So, I looked at it, and it, it's kinda weird, and it's over my head, and the fact that it still looks like it's a loan mechanism between the property developer and the person that buys the house or the property or whatever, but for somehow, because this is some weird loan that they don't have to put any money down, it has to be go through the auditor's office and be recorded on the deed and gets transferred to the next owner and whatnot. And I guess I would say I'm not too opposed to what could be potential progress, because I am in favor of things like TIF districts or tax increment financing and whatnot that could benefit development. I would say on this issue, I don't know enough about it to make some kind of expert decision without some kind of presentation from somebody that knows a heck of a lot more, that can answer the in-depth questions that I currently have.
I looked into it a little bit, it's primarily used for becoming more green, so you're upgrading your property to become more green, not usually used for building brand-new things. And so, that's why I had a lot of questions with regards to it. And then there was some, some other points of it that, this is a week or two ago before I looked it up.
Again, just for the record, all you people listening out there, this is not the county gonna give some developer a loan for their property or any of that, this is just an allowable, whether the county would allow a certain loan that the state offers. So, we would have to have a policy that we do accept that kind of a loan to be operated inside our county jurisdiction, and then it would still be between individual parties, and it would just be recorded at the auditor's office. No taxpayer money involved.
But there's some interesting things that it goes on in your assessment, I mean, so it would involve a lot more work on our part, and it's getting us in the middle of it. My first thought was, is the last time, you know, somebody down there wanted to talk about Sundune, it was, it was they wanted the county to do, issue revenue bonds in order to build the golf course, and it's like, I'm not gonna put the county on for revenue bonds to build a golf course with the hope that it's gonna make money, because not many golf courses actually run in the black.
Yeah, I'm still at the point where I have questions in that same regard, and unless somebody wanted to put on some kind of presentation to us that would be able to answer those questions and be able to, and I, I don't know what to do with it, I don't wanna just ignore it necessarily. But I can't just make a decision because one resident in Dallasport is asking us to do something for them.
And I don't think they're a resident in Dallasport, they're with Kaido.
It'll be a development resident.
I did ask Jen, and she said she was gonna look into it and find out, so she might be able to give us an update.
The quick thing that I saw in it too was, it was talking about the owner of the property, and I know that whole development down there is still in flux, I don't think that's done. So, there's a lot of work, groundwork to do for them to be owner of the property probably, and then be able to apply.
And I guess I would say to me with this, part of it is, how do you give a loan to somebody that's like no money down? To me, there's risk in everything you do, and where is the risk? And so, part of me is in the back of my head thinking, if a developer's gonna go be able to just get a loan, turn around, sell a property, how much risk is on the person that's buying the property? Because now it's on an assessment, it's on a deed, it's on whatever, and am I making some kind of deal that just made the developer a lot of money that is putting everybody the mob property from that developer in jeopardy? And unless I know the answers to these questions, and they're sitting in front of me where I can ask them, grill them and research it, and know who to call at the state level to grill on it, it's, it's, it's just not there for me, I don't have the knowledge on the subject.
Need more information.
Yeah. Give us the presentation.
So, the interesting thing is, is it pays financing provides a way for local governments and private lenders to cooperate on loans secured by the property tax obligation, similar to a local improvement district.
It might be, I mean, Oregon had taxing them in financing forever, it seems like, called it a different name. Washington just figured out the 20th century a year or two ago and allowed it. So, I'm not saying I'm absolutely against it, I just don't know, I'm not gonna sign something that could put our county or our people in financial jeopardy down the road because I signed something that I don't know what I'm signing.
So, here's the other part, one that I came across, the debt does not appear as an obligation on the building owner's balance sheet, and the repayment obligation stays with the property rather than the owner whenever the building is sold.
Wow.
It's, it just seems, I don't know, red flags flying around in my head, so.
Yeah.
I said it, unless they're gonna sit right there and answer questions, and then, even then, I'm not gonna necessarily believe what somebody sitting at that desk tells me, I need to have an avenue at the state to be able to fact-check the answers that I got. And then, in all reality, I mean, I have to look at it, that where's the text, where's the citizen benefit? But I guess if, if doing it will actually build that project and provide the homes and the whatnot that the county needs, there's the citizen benefit. But, yeah, I just, red flags. Is he, have you talked to the individual, is he willing to make a presentation or bring somebody from the state or any of that to make a presentation?
I don't know them, I've just read the emails that came in.
Yeah. That's, that's to me, next step, it's kinda like, you know, when I was working in the city of Goldendale over TIF districts, we went out and got an expert to come in and do a presentation on TIF districts, they had no skin in the game, just there to educate, you know, city hall and the council people on, you know, and then they can sit back and discuss and make a decision. We're gonna have to have that same person here, or one of us becomes that person and does all the research and presents it to the other two.
So, the county would have to adopt regulations and ordinance for the Pacer, to even allow for the Pacer program. And then, you know, we would need to get the treasurer involved and the assessor and everybody else, and have you, have you spoken with Doug Kurtzoffer?
No.
Okay. I've talked to him and his partner once or twice in the last year.
So, do we need to answer them? Do we need to send a email answer to them?
That's up to you. I guess I would say it's your, it's your district. We get a lot of emails for people and companies that want the county to sign up to their deal. We don't necessarily answer them, but in this case, I can see sending them some kind of a remark that, at this point, we need more information if we're gonna do anything.
Okay.
I'm open to that.
I appreciate you, thank you.
Actually, I'll bring it up now, just because the next thing we're gonna do is agenda, and I'm gonna pick on it on that. On the agenda, I had a question on date range, the airport management agreement. Everywhere in it, it says three-year agreement, three-year agreement from April 30th, 2023, three-year agreement, you know, extending the contract to April 30th, 2026, three-year agreement, three-year agreement, and then term of termination, it has a date of April 30th, 2028. So, I think there's just a typo on there, and I don't know whether we need to fix that or address that before we sign it. Right, I don't really plan on the minutia, do I? Gotta thoroughly read things you sign.
This is what the head arrow?
Yep, and it's under the terms, terms and termination, it says, is where it says, and you can tell it's the only spot where he handwritten in. So, it says 2028 right there, everywhere else in the agreement, it says 2026.
Does it say 2028 in the document?
In the document, he wrote in April 30th, but it's typed in 2028. But everywhere else in there, it's a three-year agreement, it says 2026, so, I mean, kinda petty, but...
Well, if it's handwritten on there, we can handwrite 2026 on there if you'd like.
I just wanna make sure we're, have the right date when we're signing. So, I guess it's a matter of, should we rule on this today and approve it, or should we pull it and double-check that date and sign it next week? Is there, I mean, it doesn't seem to be in a hurry, because we're, we're current through this contract through April 30th, so, I was just gonna say pull it and check that date out and then sign it next week, but if you wanna sign it and change the date afterwards, I don't know how you do that, but...
No, I meant, we changed the date and then signed it.
I could be completely off-base too, that's why I was saying I would send it to council that drafted the thing. I mean, one council drafted it, the other council signed off on it.
Jen's staff can verify that for you, if you wanna pull it and then back.
That's what I'm recommending, is we pull it and put it back on next week, it doesn't seem like... That would be my recommendation if my seatmates would approve of that.
I'm with Paul on it, per week.
Other than that, new business, that's a land. Any new business, unfinished business, before we move on to consent agenda?
Actually, I had a little bit of solar update.
Oh, yeah, I get one of those too.
So, this morning, when I was in my office, I did get a call from EFSEC, and I did listen to the hearings last week when Carringer laid down the application, and I listened through all of the hearings with the other projects that are going forward at EFSEC, and it was really interesting, they do a pretty rigorous process, I was impressed with WDFW and everybody weighing in on the other projects that are going forward. There are 14 projects on their list, and we're number 15 with Carringer, and they have the first laydown that Carringer gets to present to them with their rationale of why the projects would go, and then they do a, within 60 days, they have to do a citing approval plan. And so, they'll have a hearing with EFSEC and evidence, and then they go into the public hearing to decide whether they meet the citing specifications or not, and then it moves it on to their full list if they do. From what I understand of the Benton County one that was set down after their moratorium, EFSEC had to refuse it, and, but they're gonna adjudicate it to send it to the governor to see if he wants to go ahead and sign it. So, yes, their moratorium and their reasoning did hold that in place, so EFSEC would not take that application, they couldn't take that application. They were really great on the phone to work with, they're gonna be sending each one of us a packet right away on how to engage in the processes, and I asked if that hearing would be local for our citing, and they said yes, and I told them we had a wonderful new building, and so they're gonna look into it, and they'll be notifying us when they set that hearing and get it set up.
Are they gonna come here for the hearing?
Yes, yes. They'll be coming here, there's actually one this week for Benton County in Kennewick on the 23rd, and had I known about it and not workshop, I think I would've went and just went to both the hearings and learned and watched what happens to met people. But I'll have to make that decision if you guys want me here for workshop or if I can run to Kennewick. I'd like to go to Kennewick.
Workshop was kinda here.
I know, I know, and now it's like, darn it, but that's okay, everything will be online, their, their website is really easy to use, you can, you can find all of the projects you... I know, I know, and now it's like, darn it, but that's okay. Everything will be online. Their their um, their website is really easy to use. You can, you can find all of the projects. You can click on them. You can find all the documents. So I'm encouraged about the process. And they were were really helpful and you will be able to submit written testimony, verbal testimony, and you'll be able to testify at the hearings as well uh, from Clickjack County. And as it's one of our applications, uh, they did call me because it was in my district. We will be able to have a commissioner go forward and present our evidence and bring anything we need to that to those hearings from our county.
Does it have to be a commissioner?
Yes, it's one of the county commissioners and they they contacted me because it was in my district, the application's in my district. What else was I gonna tell you about that? There is one other one that's further into the process and they are at the point of taking the public testimony and they did their hearing meeting and their siding meeting. And now they're shifting through two thousand four hundred and seven written testimonies and multiple verbal testimonies uh, before they complete that meeting of what they did. So they received a lot of comments about that project.
Which project is this?
Uh, I'd have to look it up for you.
Austrada, the Yakima project?
It was the uh, Horse Haven Wind Farm.
Oh, yeah, that's the big one.
Is that Yakima? Okay, yeah, it was that one. They received two thousand two hundred and forty-seven comments plus oral comments on the EIS that they're doing.
It's huge. Yakima had five comments, if I remember right.
And then the Badger Mountain. And I didn't look where it's at. She told me about it today. She said, look at the Badger Mountain project because it's most similar to ours and the county situation is similar to ours.
EFSEC has a map that shows the permits out there and you can click on the Badger map and get all of that.
Okay, and get all that data. So that would be a good one to look at and learn about. So that process is moving forward.
Um, I will jump in since we're still talking solar. I got an email from Nextera uh, that uh, wanted to reach out to introduce themselves. I'm sure they received countless, we received countless inquiries from developers requesting an audience, blah, blah, blah. Ahead of the February twentieth public hearing, he was hoping that he can meet by phone individually with the commissioners to learn more about our uh, perspective positions on renewable energy development. And unlike some of my of the more fly-by-night developers, we generally want to ensure we're the best possible members of the community, which, you know, it's good to hear that he thinks somebody else is fly-by-night and that he actually wants to be a member of the community. Uh, anyway, my response to him is, as we are currently under a moratorium and the record is open to to make public comment for or against the moratorium, I would find it in bad form for commissioners to have private meetings with one side of an argument, one law having private meetings with the other side. Uh, during our public hearing, we will have public testimony which both sides can argue uh, on both sides of the argument and if the county needs to create or update our ordinances in preparation for green energy companies now choosing to bypass the county permit process and go straight through EFSEC. Each individual will be allowed three minutes of verbal comment via in-person or via Zoom during either the afternoon one-thirty hearing or the evening hearing, but not both. We are allow also allowing a written comment. I hope you can understand my position on being fair to all parties in this regard. Uh, I will also be discussing the appearance of fairness doctrine with my seatmates on Tuesday to make sure they are aware of this issue going forward. Um, so I wanted to throw that out to you, just so you knew I had a conversation to pretty much kind of ask him to be more hands-off. But if you don't know the appearance of fairness doctrine, um, I would um, recommend you look at it because technically even now if somebody sends you a uh, email with comments on the solar moratorium kind of thing, normally we would just answer that email. Right now, you probably shouldn't answer that email. You were trying to be fair and impartial and just, if you want to say thank you for your comment, that's fine, but I wouldn't get into why we were going to be a judicial body on the issue. So I wanted to kind of bring that up in case of solar companies, which look like they're coming out in force right now. So that you were all aware.
So I had one more comment on Carringer. Everyone within one mile of that project will receive the same packet we receive and all the updates, too, so. But then they asked me to get back to them as soon as possible. And I told them I wanted to ask you guys first, who else should receive these packets? Do we have other partners or other people that we feel need to receive the packets? I was thinking maybe the city of Goldendale. Anybody outside the radius that you feel is important to receive the packets?
Do we know what all's in this packet? Is it the site certification, the two hundred and eighty-eight pages or whatever that is?
She did not say. It's notification that the application came and what their processes are, and then they'll receive updates as well as it moves through the process.
Are they, are they going to provide this packet to anybody that wants one later on? So like if.
Yes, I believe you can probably be on a list.
Because it's not, it won't be a document that we provide.
No.
Because it's not a document that we create.
No.
So if there's a foyer request for this document, it would need to go to EFSEC for a foyer request.
Right, and I believe there's a way to get on their list and receive updates.
Okay.
About a project. They're fairly open.
You know, I I would hope that it would go to more people than just a mile, but if that's their process, then, you know, I I guess you can send, have one sent to the city.
Any other suggestions?
You know, in all reality, I would probably say sent to each of the junior taxing districts and they would hold that junior taxing area. So I I'm, I would be fire EMS, library, every, every junior taxing district should have a part of the process because they're part of the tax in that area. Disagree? Agree? Care? Don't care?
I mean, I think everything's on the website, too.
It is, and I think most of those junior taxings won't care. I just hate to leave them out and have them yell at me later for it. I don't know.
Not sure.
I don't want to overanalyze. You'll do fine.
Well, I'm not sure who, if that is information that they're gonna gain anything out of right in the beginning. They're gonna be interested in the, personally, they might, it might be in their area and they might be interested.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think the EMS district might want to weigh in on the process, so they might want to be kept up to date with the process if they're having to run annulances down a road that's full of chuck holes.
Okay.
Um, I mean, we have that issue in Bickleton, so that's why it's bringing it up. Um, you know, fire district might want to be concerned if it's in their fire district. Uh, and so that's why I said I would reach out to all the junior taxings and leave it up to them on whether they care or not.
And do you want it only the junior taxing districts within that permit that was laid down?
That's what I would do.
Okay.
Because that's the only ones, the only taxing districts it affects.
Okay.
Um, so they should have a right to keep up to date on what's going on that could affect them and their government agency is the way I'm thinking about it, anyway.
Okay, really one needs to be sent to the cemetery.
People are dying to get into the cemetery every day.
Okay, so are we done with solar topic? I have another topic. Go ahead.
We can keep going. I uh, I got that same email that you got and I said, thank you for reaching out. Due to the quasi judicial nature of the moratorium, it would not be wise to meet with any parties until after the public hearing and the board's decision. After that, I'd be happy to meet and hear about any plans that Nextera has for Clickjack County. So, and he said, oh, I totally understand.
Yeah, well, that's that's what he said back to me, too. It was kind of funny. You can tell he was trying to get somewhere and he's like, oh, yes, we totally agree and look forward to connecting once things wrapped up.
Uh, with that said, though, um, I wanted to, you were covering a lot there with the Benton County issue, um, but that would, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was not their moratorium that required them to go through the adjudication process. That was because they actually changed their zoning codes.
From what I understood, with the moratorium and their zoning codes, it didn't meet EFSEC qualification. So EFSEC said no, but they were gonna go ahead and send it for adjudication to send up to the governor. And if he wanted to choose to cross those land use planning zonings, that would be up to him.
So, so the zoning in place created the the position for EFSEC that there was a determination that it is not consistent with the underlying land use.
Correct.
And so uh, the moratorium didn't have anything to do with that. According to the documents I read from them.
Okay.
And then, um, so then the the applicant has the option to go through the adjudication process to ask the governor to preempt local zoning designations. So it added another hurdle, but they're still moving forward with it and asking.
So the governor hasn't used his executive authority to overwrite local permitting uh, and local zoning yet.
Yet.
And it's just a matter of Willie for this project because this is a really big project. I mean, really big. Uh, whereas he.
It'll be interesting.
I would be curious to see if he's really to do that or not.
Yeah, test the waters.
That's, that's an interesting one. I mean, he doesn't care about us anyway, but um, off topic code compliance, your letter here. I did not sign that letter, but I did during lunch go up to uh, upstairs. I got a form off the desk for filling out a code compliance complaint complaint, and I filled out and said complaint and I signed it and I taped it to the person's door. So there's now a uh, complaint on file signed by me, taped to their door for when they get back from the office. But I use their official code complaint form, which I would believe is the same thing that everybody else would ever have to do. Did not do one of these, did have to fill out a form and sign the form, and so that's what I did.
And you did it as yourself or as?
Signed it as me. I did give the address and phone number for the office. So I probably should put commissioner and Christopher because I'm doing it as the chairman. But, so there is one I want. Works for me.
So um, land use and planning. We've been discussing the comprehensive plan, the CAO and the SMP. And um, last week um, I committed to the director that we would discuss how we move forward. And she had asked permission to to put off the uh, comp plan for a little bit and still work on the other two. And I did some more calls and uh, Department of Commerce, Ecology, and just learned some more things. And right now, um, with all the testimony that we've taken, all the letters we received with Planning Commission, there's just issues within both the CMP or the uh, CAO and the shoreline management plan that we need to somehow be able to dissect through those and find the errors. It's pretty complicated, pretty deep, pretty big documents. And then there's some concern how those relate to the comp plan and not going forward with it. And the comp plan is basically our policies and we haven't done it. We haven't updated our policies. And the other two documents are regulatory documents that hold that document up. So to do those first and stamp them and put them in place, we would um, from the people that I've talked with, be structuring our regulations before we know what were the documents gonna take us. So I investigated maybe some possibilities of somehow could we uh, not look obstructive, but get into the comp plan plus start tweaking these other two documents and bring them along as we start moving the other document. I know there was concern about a June thirtieth date and what I found out, that is just a June thirtieth date for the grant. And with the current contractor who's been working since about two thousand sixteen, we still don't have any completed document from all the phases we've been through, all of the money we've spent everywhere we've been. So with the leftover comp, with the leftover grant money and the senior planner or the long-range planner position, we're in a position where we probably could come up with the funds without looking forward out of the, out of the budget, that we could rearrange our situation and maybe take a different approach to how we're creating these documents to get them done. Um, what I'd like to ask is that I'm able to, or we're able to go back to the director and say, since we have a June thirtieth date and this is all pretty complicated and we need to make some wise decisions, I would like to approach a lot of this in the workshops, bring in the information each, share it and try to devise a plan forward so we start getting away from any errors that are made, any um, documents that might have things in them that are an overreach and try to come up with a plan by March sixteenth workshop, which would give us a couple, couple, three weeks to get ourselves together and decide what our plan is for the director to move forward. And that would still give us three and a half months till June thirtieth before we run out of that grant if we continue to use it the way we're using it. But I would like some breathing room here to really uh, dig into those documents, look at them and come up with a way to rearrange it and plan how do we go forward from here and not just keep moving. There's a scheduled uh, hearing on the twenty-seventh that's gonna move the SMP further along and further along, and it's gonna be harder to reel it back in. And it's also confusing for the Planning Commission if we keep having them meet and laying down documents and then in the end, we need to pull it back anyhow and work on it. Does that make sense? I'm concerned that we're just going forward with a train that's gonna derail. And if we can find another way to approach this and uh, bring in more information and options. Or even bring in more information and options and keep going on the chart we're on, but have a more updated schedule so we can approve of it as it's moving forward. So we don't just blindly go down this trail for three and a half months and then we have a bigger problem.
Well, I guess like everything, it really comes down to what's your setback? You know, that's really what you're you're arguing over when it comes down to shorelines, critical areas and all that. It's, how do you delineate it? What's your setback and what's your stream segments? And so, and then what are you using for best available sites?
And the maps and.
And your maps and all that. I would say if if there was any direction that I would give, it would be that, you know, the Planning Commission takes that on rather than us directing that. In terms of, you know, um, changing the comp plan for the goals and policies and all this. I don't think we're gonna change it so that there's a goal or a policy that's like, we want to build down to the every river or anything like that.
Right, no.
You just, you just can't. So, so like, when I look at it from the top down of, you know, your goals and policies, most of what we're doing is trying to to fall within the legal bounds that the WACs and RCWs require of us. And then it comes down to negotiation amongst the Planning Commission of what those setbacks should or shouldn't be. And I don't see where the comp plan is going to to really direct that because the goals and the policies are the same and whether, you know, Commissioner Christopher is sitting there saying, I want to see what the bare minimum of the law says. And so that would be, you know, from yours, that would be the direction that we would give to the director to say, this is what we're going to ask for when it comes to us. Make sure what you're doing right now is is spending your time with the consultant to come up with what the bare minimum is. So that we can see that because it sounds like, because that's what we're really doing. We're trying to put sideboards on this, right?
Yeah, I would, I would think the same thing. If we, if we're trying to get involved in every meeting, it it might get messy if the planning director is under the guidance from the board that, look, when this thing is prepared, we want to see item by item on what, what is state minimum and what are we doing over and above state minimum, kind of like we're directing our road department with Title Twelve Road Board. And then understand that we're probably gonna send this out for peer review. I want a second company looking at this to tell me if Watershed Group is pulling my leg. Uh, because again, I'm not a land use expert. And in those two regards, that's where we're gonna catch the.
Well, and that's what, excuse me, that's what Planning Commission is designed for in my mind. If they were dissecting that document, not just laying it down as a big done document full and say, oh, look through it and tell us it's okay. If they broke it down into chapters and sub-chapters and went through it and there were no more questions on it and you moved on, then they. then they could qualify what Watershed Company had done.
So what you're essentially asking is to get, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm, I'm just trying to read between the lines. Sorry for everybody that can't hear me because I was leaning back some of my seat making, so you see each other. So I think what you're asking, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we give direction to the planning director to slow down the process, break the program into pieces, have Planning Commission hear and see documents on each piece and weigh in on each piece individually before moving on to the next piece to get a more thorough overview or critique from the Planning Commission. Maybe that was too long.
No, that wasn't. That was Jake, could you, is that?
Is that what you're asking?
He's asking, is that what you were looking for?
I think that would work. I think that's what they're designed to do. And I know in the past, we had even committed during Planning Commission where they meet once a month. We have committed in the past to say, okay, who wants to be on a work group? And you had volunteers be on a work group. And we even scheduled meetings in between time when it was a tough subject. And we would travel to the Pioneer Center where it was easier for some people to come and meet that were on that board. But we committed even in between our regular meetings to have workshops to get these things done. There is a way to use Planning Commission and Planning Volunteers. And then you wouldn't be paying for a secondary look from another company.
I would, because same deal, the reason I would be paying for a peer review is because I want a, a company or individuals that are trained and experts in land use. And I can't justifiably in my head say that all the members that sit on the Planning Commission are trained and experts in land use. They might know a lot about.
Well, and that's, that's another, another concern of mine with Planning Commission. I, I think we still have a very wide gap who Planning Commission is, why they're appointed and how they're used. And at one time we did have a training manual, Jake. I don't know if when you were on Planning Commission, did they hand you a booklet that said, here's your training, this is who you are, this is how you operate? And I think that's something that's really needed for Planning Commission as a new member, you should, yeah. And I looked for mine, I don't have it.
I, I love the idea.
Yeah, we had that document. It was a folder. It wasn't one of the big, big folders, but it was a folder and had the R C Ws. You didn't?
So that's currently being done.
And they might want to have like a review of that. There's also an R C W, or a R C W, a resolution that was passed when Planning Commission was created. And I think the original one was like 1954. And then we had updates to it through the years. And the last one that designs Planning Commission and how they work with the commissioners and the R C W or their under is missing. It's nowhere in the records. And the Auditor's Office has searched for it. They've searched in archives and Wenatchee. That is missing. It has a number, but the physical.
So we have a resolution and a resolution number written down in the resolution log?
Yes.
But no pieces of paper anybody can find for the actual resolution?
Several people have looked for it at several levels and it's gone. So we may want to entertain revisiting drafting a resolution and getting that back in our files, drafting something of what is our relationship with the.
Say, if we don't have something, we're going to need to create something.
Yeah.
If we can't find the old one, we need to make a new one.
Yes, because there's some difference in the R C Ws and how Planning Commission works and some difference in the director's approach with Planning Commission and how it's being used that is different from the commissioner's idea and how we've traditionally. Historic precedence shows Planning Commission has always been under the county commissioners. We've appointed them and they have been a body that assists the, the commissioners and the planning department to get to the documents that we need created. And those processes need to be defined on paper so we're sure they're following them. I had another point there, but it went in and out of my head.
Yeah, that one I would, I would think that one is a no brainer. If nobody can find the actual document explaining the processes, then we need to create a new document explaining.
And I did reach out when I started having some differences like last September, October, when things just weren't functioning the way I was normally used to them functioning for 10 years. I reached out to all the other non-G M A planning counties. Everybody has Planning Commission, like we have Planning Commission and everybody works the same way we work on Planning Commission. They aren't just a subboard that takes a quick look at documents that have been prepared and says, sure. They're more of a, a working, physical generating.
So I guess my question is if we had a resolution explaining how the board or the commission is supposed to work, nobody can find that resolution, so we need to make a new resolution. Who would be the designated person that would then research the other non-G M A counties to give us a template because no sense?
I can do that. I can bring it to workshop.
Well, I was going to say, have you checked them all or?
Yeah.
I was questioning whether that would be you or Moshe, but it sounds like she already did it. So yeah, I would think we would need to schedule a workshop to have that discussion and get, make sure all of the players are in the room.
And that's what I was.
Director and the prosecuting attorney for legal opinion and everybody's invited to that.
And that's what I was on the agenda for, for Thursday. But I thought I would get ahead of the game a little bit and get some of the things that you would need for the workshop on Thursday to get that to you.
This was, this is your plan for this Thursday?
Yeah.
Or did you invite those players?
I'll put it on there to invite them.
Maybe sure notice to invite those players, but we can try.
But it's a start and we need to start it, so.
Yeah, that one's easier. The one with how we move forward on the shoreline management plan, I think, kind of depends on what we come up with there. So if we can get moving on that one, that would give us the
The direction, yeah.
To the policy on how we move forward after. So I think that's the correct order of business.
So I'll bring those in with me on Thursday for suggestions and do I reach out and invite P A or? Okay, oh, great. Work harder.
So it's, it's, that's what I said, it's kind of last minute to provide, you know, prosecutors and other elected official. You're not going to drop a schedule on two days' notice.
We could start on it, but then talking to Lee, I think the next scheduled workshop was going to be March 16th.
Yeah.
Which would be three weeks out. But then, like I said, that still leaves us three and a half months of time under that D O E.
You know, I'm not technically worried about the grant running out on June 30th or whatever because by my way, the Planning Commission is going to be far more busy with other things than.
Then why don't I just bring you samples to talk about on Thursday so we can get a start?
We can get a start and get an idea.
Idea that will be done on the 16th and present.
On that next workshop, we'll
Okay.
Plan to draft something that we will sign on the following Tuesday.
So my other question is for the director right now, how do we assist her so some of the burdens taken off? And do we let her know we're going to be working forward with the process? And, and we'll have something available for her on the March 16th meeting so she can go ahead and continue on with her work on those documents?
So we have a draft S M P. And we took that draft S M P and initial, went out for a C P A. And that C P A was appealed and we pulled back the draft S M P. And so it's sitting there as a draft S M P. We have on the S M P update scheduled from December to January, doing the online open house, an update on the county's website. Then we begin our public information meeting, virtual meetings with the Planning Commission and then draft amendments posted on the county website. What you're saying in essence is, is that you don't, you are not confident and happy with the current draft S M P and you would like to direct the staff to have more workshops, have new workshops with the Planning Commission so that they can make amendments to the draft S M P before we take it back out for the public. That's what you're asking for.
Yes. And we have the appeals. The C A O has an appeal.
We're talking, I, I deal with one at a time.
One at a time, okay.
S M P, right?
Right, so, you know, making sure we dot our i's and cross our t's before we go any further.
So in essence, what you're telling the, that from your read of the draft S M P, you're unhappy with it and it wouldn't make it past your desk in the first place. So you would like to have it sent back to, because usually we, we let it go through the process. It gets up to us, we hold a public hearing, then we put it back to the Planning Commission. What you're trying to do is, is front run that and just be honest and be like, hey, I'm not happy with the draft S M P. Take it back for workshops, work on it.
Yep.
And the direction you want to give for them to work on would be what? Specifically?
Meeting but not exceeding state law for sure. Some of the complaints that we've heard in the past two weeks.
That's the hard part for me because I think so much of that is interpretation. I think, I do think there is some misinformation out there. I think some people are wound up over things that don't pertain to them. They think their property is going to be hammered for things that it doesn't even get onto their property. Because it did originally, but then it's been updated and now it doesn't. Kind of a scenario. So, but in a way I can, I can see the commissioner's point that because there has been changes, it is a little or a little more messy. That if it's, why go through procedures, spend taxpayer mon, time and money to present us a document that we're not going to sign? If that's the case, let's kick it back right now and say, no, 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 you don't have to start over, but dissect this thing one chapter at a time until we can get more comfortable with it.
You know, the flow data was questioned from qualified sources. There was a public participation, lack.
Did those people that are obviously not in this room and not on the Planning Commission, that have a problem with this document actually speak up at the time they have during the Planning Commission to actually speak up? Or did they sit on the sidelines and complain about it after the fact?
No, actually spoke up.
That's important.
And so did Planning Commission. And we were not allowed more workshops.
After time.
Yeah, no more workshops. The workshops were cut off and we had to, we were supposed to just accept data as was. Even though we asked for maps, we were told no.
Was that for C A O or S M P? Because I'm looking at the S M P and there's lots and lots of maps.
I was talking C A O.
Okay, one thing at a time.
Yeah. And I'm trying to think back to S M P. That, that's been a while.
So you want to send the S M P back? And what do you want, and you want to do the exact same with the C A O?
Yes, because they were talking about merging the documents. I don't think that's the word she used. You questioned it last week when we talked about it. And then when I was looking through other counties, C A Os and S M Ps today that Watershed had done, they did the same exact move with those. They actually integrated those documents. And so that's what was going to be happening in, in the next few weeks where they, they were going to start integrating those two documents. And if we have problems with both documents, we need to back up before we start merging the two.
I don't believe they're going to be, they're not going to be merged. But they're going to be consistent with one another's was what she said, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the kicker. They're going to be looking at both documents side by side to make sure one doesn't critique or criticize the other. I don't think they're joining. As I say, I know there's another question out there on whether these two documents should be done before the comp plan as a guidance document for the comp plan or whether the comp plan should be done first as a guidance document for these. And I've heard both sides from, I guess I'd say both sources. Again, not a land use attorney, I don't know the answer to that one. But for that regard, I hate turning back the clock on a project and starting over. I mean, not necessarily over again, but kind of over again because all you're doing is spending more money. But in the same regard, if, if the Planning Commission, who we use as an advisory board for us, felt hurried, rushed, incomplete, how can we have a viable answer to sign the document? And if that's what we're going to do is just sign the document anyway, then maybe we should just disband the Planning Commission and not use them because we're obviously not listening to them. So you know, if that's the answer is go back and work on each individual item all over again as opposed to getting the peer review when it's done? I, I'm open, but either way I need it looked at closer than what it is.
So I don't want to micromanage. The S M P is 120 pages long, deals with just about everything. What I'm hearing from you is, is that while you were on the Planning Commission, you did not feel that you were, you were heard, that there were enough workshops and that you worked through all of these issues line by line.
Correct.
And, and so I would say like giving the direction, and I'm just going off the top of my head here. The direction would be is, is to resend the draft out to the Planning Commissioners and have them decide what they feel needs to be discussed
Okay.
Between the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Because if you're going to try to go through 100 and, well, 100 and whatever pages, and then also you've got all the maps. I mean, I see so much of this, you know, a lot of this is in R C W. You can't change some of the, much of this. There are things that you can make it permitted or conditional or outright permitted that maybe they'd want to change. The big change, the big change I see is, is, you know, I'd want, A, the Planning Commission to sign off and agree on all of the string segments that are going to be included in the S M P.
Okay.
Because like, for example, I fought on the, from the inside on the county side over Cave Creek and Dry Creek. These don't meet the amount of water that flows through here. This is ridiculous just because you have best available science. And I was like, just pull them out. And they're like, we can't. Well, you can do anything you damn well want, you just don't want to. Is, you know, from the Water, the Watershed Company and, you know, I would say that would be that same, same thing. I understand where they're coming from because if you pull it out, then someone's going to appeal it saying, well, their best available science says this should be included. How can you pull this out? But by pulling it out, it's still going to be part of the critical areas ordinance anyway, so who cares in my mind?
Yeah, I would agree with Commissioner Anderson. If we're going to reopen this and go back before the Planning Commission on it, I don't want to start from scratch on, you know, Planning Director reading line by line and having comment. The Planning Commission needs to do their due diligence, the, the public through public comment in the process needs to do their due diligence and line item issues they currently have. And then let's readdress those issues.
Okay.
Until we can come to a peaceful resolution. And then hopefully we don't have to recreate the entire document. We can just work on the document.
And that was, my heart's desire was to make sure we just work with the document we have. And what can we do to do the corrections to it? And that sounds reasonable to let Planning Commission and Public Comment say, okay, answer this for me.
Like I said, we might come up with, might end up coming up with two documents too. I think we've mentioned that on numerous fronts where Planning Where Planning Commission might say, now we were, you know, green on item number two and Planning Director says, no, I'm red on item number two.
And that's.
And it will come here and we will get to decide whether we're green or red.
Yes, and that's her prerogative to do that too.
And so.
But the Planning Commission needs to be valued for the work they can do and produce for us.
So that's kind of the guidance we need to give when we give it. So, yeah, I'm.
But the time needs to be allowed for the Planning Commission to do that. And that was not happening. It was pulled away from them with no subsequent meetings. They weren't able to do what you're talking about now. Get answers for those line item things. And then if the two documents come forward and they're different, then that's the way the law says it can happen and we'll take a look at everything.
Using our best available science.
Yes.
Okay, I'm fine with that. So we will discuss this again on Thursday with the Planning Director, I'm assuming?
Yes.
So when I look at the amount of available information on the SMP, huge amount of information. When I look at the CAO, the CAO in my mind has a far wider reaching net. And when you look at it, there's far less information on our website. And so I think the SMP probably would be a lot easier to look at because the, the amount of information is large. There might be a few places they, that they want to work on it. But again, I'll leave that up to the Planning Commission with the direction to the director to work with the Planning Commission to make refinements where that, where the commission feels appropriate. With the CAO, I'm just reading the comments from the commissioners here. Where at least Commissioner Zoller and one other was recommending that it not move forward to a public hearing as written because they only had two workshops. And so
and, and that, that was sunsetted. You know, we ended with that and it didn't move anymore. And then all of a sudden we were working on the SMP again. And that was confusing to me why we didn't back up and take a look and allow that work to happen. And where was that going to interject again? Six months, a year from now. And then all of a sudden, the comments of needing more meetings were ignored for Planning Commission. Both those documents need to be gone through.
And so I think that's probably going to be where the, there's more work to be done is on the CAO and the language. And yeah, I, I agree though that, you know, the maps are going to be a lot more difficult because there's a lot more to it than just your shorelines of statewide significance.
Especially if you're wanting to see every map.
Right.
That's, that's probably going to entail each Planning Commission member doing their homework and, or having a laptop where they can bring it up in their meeting and look at an item without having to be a printed, you know, 16 inch paper map on each quarter acre section of stream.
Well, and the same with the CAO. If they do their homework and they come prepared to say, this is an area that I'm concerned about, then they've looked at that map probably and they have their packet ready to have discussion with the Planning Director and the Planning Commission on what do we do with this, this part or this point? You can do the same thing, but like you said, it'll probably be a lot more work on the CAO than it is the SMP.
I just don't want them to get stuck on one issue and just argue it through multiple workshops. I mean, if you, if you, if the Planning Commission disagrees with the Planning Director on something, that's fine. Just on the comment, one's red, one's green, move on to the next item. And, and let's try to get as much of it hammered out as we can hammer. And, and I'm fine with that as long as it doesn't.
And they probably need to, to understand that very clearly that if they have a disagreement with planning and planning seems to want to keep it that way in the document, then they can interject their comments and leave them, like you said, in red or something in the document and move on. So it doesn't take two years to get through it.
A side document that they're keeping track on, you know, chapter 12, item number three, I believe this.
Okay.
You know, on a side document. And then, you know, when it gets to us, we can see all of the things they disagreed with. And find them easily in the document. However, that's done versus creating two standalone documents. It might just be easier to have their disagreements on a, on a side index, you might say.
So are we good for Thursday then? And then we'll go ahead and maybe table the idea of that resolution and thinking about that, moving forward with it till the 16th so we can be sure and talk to the prosecutor about that resolution.
Yeah, I would, I would bring it up on Thursday so planning is aware that we're looking at creating it and, and they can either work on a document or work with you on a document for, for recommendation and discussion. They can even throw it through the legal before then. So we're kind of ready to go too. So they need to be informed of that. Okay. Does that answer your questions for your Thursday workshopy stuff?
Yes.
Well, let's move on to consent agenda before we go on to board pending or anything else. And that way we can at least sign papers where we're talking. What is the airport? We pulled the airport, what?
Number six.
Was it six?
Airport renewal lease agreement.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion that doesn't have a number six in it.
So it says here though, that the, it has been fully executed and expire on the fifth anniversary of the effective date. But we'll just pull it. Twenty eight, yeah. Right.
As I said, I'm so confused in there because it's either 26, 28, it's kind, and maybe I just don't know how to read, but.
Okay.
It's like clarification that we're not screwing up.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda item with seven items noting item number six, the airport renewal lease agreement has been full pulled for further consideration.
And I'll second the motion.
We have a motion to second to approve seven items noting that number six has been pulled. Any further comment on the issue? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving consent agenda with seven items, pulling item number six, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Pay the bills. That's over here, I think. Yep.
So Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve accounts payable warrants in the amount of $137,484.83 and payroll benefit warrants in the amount of zero for the date ending February 21st, 2023.
I will second the motion.
Uh, we have a motion to second to pay the bills. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Do we need to note this correspondence on the record? Okay, so I don't need to read it or anything. Okay.
Okay, I was just looking at that.
Any other fun stuff that pops your bunny? We did have a landfill contract discussion after last meeting. And if you want, maybe 10 minutes tops on executive, I can give you a brief update on where that is. If there's nothing else, we'll do that executive after. If there's any other board pending issues or anything that won't hold us over until next week or Thursday, sorry.
I don't have anything on my list.
That was me. I know there's something I meant to bring up, but it was in my emails. Let me look real quick to make sure I'm not missing it. And all three of the things that were in my emails, jail and Nixterra and airport. So with that, let me find the. I guess I'll ask if any, anyone on Zoom, any elected officials have any comments or anything they need the board for before we go into an executive? Anyone else? I'll use executive privilege and go ahead and allow it. Mr. McDermott, you have your hand up. Can we assist you with something?
Yeah, thanks, Dan. So I listened through the whole meeting. Thank you guys. Did a good job. I think a lot of the cautions that you expressed, I think, were in the county's interest. I want to let you know that the Dallas Board Community Council is going to also submit a comp plan. And there will be some issues that came up at the last community council meeting. I was reelected as president again, so I can speak for the council. Some of the wetland issues, especially in Dallas, where the perched wet, wetland issues will be taking a particular close look at. And I just wanted to know whether or not you wanted our input ahead of time as we, as we navigate that.
I would be probably speaking at a turn since this is more than likely an environmental and there would be time for comment. But I would say as the Planning Commission works through this, no, but then the Planning Director, I'm sure will reach out to the public for comments and then make adjustments. If I'm not speaking out the wrong side of my head. And I think that would be the time for communities to get actively involved at the comments. Or if, if the writings in the document do not meet your satisfaction, that would be the time when she reaches out.
Okay, that's fair enough. That's all I've got. You guys can.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
With that, we'll take this time to notify you that we are going to go into an executive session in accordance with RCW 4230. Dot 11I, PRIN. Is that a, the PRIN one? And then D. To review negotiations and performance of publicly bid contracts when public knowledge regarding such consideration could cause a likelihood of increased costs. And then I, let's just do it for 10 minutes. I don't think it'll go more than that. I'm going to just kind of give you a quick update and then most of the update will be done by legal counsel when they get back. I just don't want to leave you hanging. So let's just do 10 minutes and, and then we will, after that, we're not going to take any action. We'll just come back and adjourn the regular meeting until one o'clock on Thursday for workshops. So thank you everyone on Zoom land and we will see you next week.